It's good to be back in person seeing everyone this evening. This is our April 19th El Segundo City Council meeting. We're going to start with roll call and then we'll have the invocation last led by Pastor Rob McKenna of the Ridge Church. Following that, Pledge of Allegiance led by our own Mayor Pro Tem Pimentel. Madam Clerk, would you please take roll call?
There we go. So much fun. Councilmember Giroux.
Here.
Councilmember Nichol.
Here.
Councilmember Pursek.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Pimentel.
Here.
Mayor Boils.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, if you could all please rise, we'll ask the invocation to be led by Pastor Rob McKenna.
Let's power heads. Help me Father, tonight I'm filled with just a heartfelt full of thankfulness, Lord God, in all that you're doing in our city right now. There are so many things to be proud of, from our high school girls soccer team to what you're doing with businesses and total golf, Lord, just a lot of favor. And so, Lord, we pray tonight and give thanks in all things. Lord, thank you for watching over our city. Lord, thank you for bringing protection to it. Lord, tonight I pray as I always do, I pray for wisdom and discernment for our city council. Lord, give them direction as they make decisions. Lord, thank you for this community, the people that are here, Lord, their concerns, their cares, Lord God, also the things that they're thankful for. And so, Lord, we pray tonight that you continue to do these wonderful things, Lord, and we lift up our police officers and our firefighters. Lord, thank you for what they do, keep them safe in all that they do, Lord God. And thank you for our schools, our students, teachers, administrators, Lord God. We're thankful for the amazing schools that we have, wonderful teachers and great students. And Lord, thankful for those who take care of our city, Lord, they keep it clean and watch over it, Lord God, we are thankful for that. So, Lord, bless this meeting, we pray this in your name. Amen. The United States of America, a republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor McKenna, thank you Mayor Pro Tem Pimentel. All right, we have quite a few presentations and first up, do we have the girls soccer team? They must be outside because... I'm thinking, yeah, can somebody grab the El Segundo Girls High School varsity soccer team, please? Hopefully they're here.
I see the doors burst open.
Yeah, exactly. Awesome. Hey ladies, welcome. Wait till everyone fills in. Do we have Coach? Is Coach here? Skip here? Yeah, just, no, you're perfect standing here for me. Is Coach here? Okay, great. There he is. Skip, I've got, I've got a list for you of all the ladies on your team here, but we are so glad to have the El Segundo High School Girls Varsity Team here. They have, for two years in a row, they've won CIF SS title, moving up from Division Four to Division Three, representing El Segundo High School with convincingly tenacity to battle through and beat the number one and two seeds, claiming back-to-back CIF championship titles, as well as finishing second in the state regional playoffs. So let's give them a round of aha's, a round of applause. All right ladies, we're going to get a photo with you, but before we get a photo with you, we'd love to hear from Coach Skip Jones. So Coach, second year in a row, here's your sheet. If you want your cheat sheet with all the names printed, hand this to your coach, will you please? Thank you.
Did you, well first off, thank you for having us here again this year, we appreciate it. I know you've got a lot of things to do and we'll get through this as soon as we, as possible. Did you want me to announce all the girls' names?
Yeah, if you would mind, it's up to you Skip, but yeah, whatever you'd like to say.
Barcelona Heredia, Megan C. Dabaka, Shelby Lyons. Audrey, oh my God.
Use the sheet.
Nah, I had her sister like five years ago I coached her, that's where that comes from. Shelby Lyons, Lizzie Kapoor, Tyler Matlos, Ariana Gotome, Sarah Bedoyan, Chelsea Charles, Jaden Foad, Bella Munoz, Kiki Doggett, Bryn Boils, Eva Adlam, Charlie Garrison, Michaela Turner, Holly Willbanks, Tanner Ijimbs, and Delaney McRoberts. I just wanted to, real quickly, I wanted, when I was here last year, when we were here last year, I made a comment about last year's team paving the road or something to that effect in regards to future years. And I just want to say that these girls continued to build on that foundation this past season and made it even stronger, and I think that going forward, hopefully things continue in the same trend and El Segundo's girls soccer at the high school continue to be a force to be reckoned with within the South Bay and the South and the Southern section area. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Hey, one of the team captains, Skip, you want to have the team captain say a couple words, but two questions. One is, are you finally retiring, Coach? I know you've been driving from a long distance. And the second is, I coached at least three of these girls when they were like eight or nine, do I get any credit for that? No? Okay.
Depends which three they are. So I promised them I wouldn't make them speak this time like at the school board function, but higher powers have overruled me.
Michaela, please come up here with us.
Come on, you didn't talk last time, you could do it this time.
Thank you, it's your turn.
It's your turn to talk.
No. What am I meant to talk about?
Thank you.
I don't understand next to you, I feel sorry.
I feel embarrassed, I don't want to talk. Go ahead. I haven't eaten in days. Take your time. Hello, do I just speak? Yeah, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Michaela Turner, I'm a senior, so I've been playing for El Segundo Soccer Team for four years. I guess I just want to say that it's been amazing to see the growth of players and the program as a whole throughout the course of my years through high school, and I think that this is a really great group of girls, and I wouldn't have traded my senior season for anything. I think we work really well on the field, but I think that we're a family off the field. And I'm so glad that I've got to spend my last few months with you guys because I think this relationship is so important. So, thank you guys for everything.
I think I talked last time already, but yeah, I just want to say this is a really special team to me, even though like I've been playing for four years, it's really like one of the best like teammates I've had in high school. I usually am so used to having like a family ball with my club team and not the high school, but this year I really felt that, so I appreciate you guys for that.
Ooh, I gotta be a closer. Well, I just wanted to say, like I said at the school board, how much I adore this team and how much I'm so proud of you guys for everything you've accomplished this season and last season, and, and I can't wait to see how well you guys play in the next four years and hopefully I can come back and watch a few games, maybe coach.
Yeah, maybe there's a big room, maybe someone's in front, some of the girls are gone. No. Not at all. Okay, did a little test. All right, here we go guys, and one, two, and a couple more, and one more. There might be some other folks, there may be some other folks that want to have photos, I don't know.
You go, one, two, three, lovely, thank you.
Thanks Coach, have fun at Mamadis, girl, girls. All right, next up, we have the 2021 Police Officer and Civilian of the Year, we're going to hear from Chief Jaime Berhmaniz.
Good evening Mayor, members of council. Every year, the Police Department recognizes an Officer of the Year as well as a Civilian of the Year. These employees have distinguished themselves with their work and are true professionals in representing our core values at ESPD. This year, I'm excited to present to you Officer Dominic Fix Hilton and Property Officer Nelson Moreno as our Officer of the Year and Civilian Employee of the Year. A little information on each one, Officer Fix has been with us since 2017. He was assigned as one of our Community Lead Officers in 2020 and currently works on several important projects. He has received eight written commendations for his work and has done several Neighborhood Watch presentations, as well as coordinated the Toys for Tots event last holiday season. He's also an instructor in our popular Citizens Police Academy. Fix is an active reserve in the Marine Corps. He recently married his beautiful wife Kat two days ago. Congratulations. Kat is also here to celebrate this with him, and your mother-in-law is also here, so good luck with that. And they're, the family's huge Dodger fan, so congratulations Fix. All right. All right Nelson, your turn, come on up. Very brief, Nelson Moreno, he's been with us since 2019, he transferred from Redondo Beach PD. He knows his job very well, he has taken complete ownership of his job and updated the booking process, he modernized our property rooms, and he implemented a new evidence booking system. Nelson was also named the 2021 Officer of the Year by the California Association of Property and Evidence. Nelson served in the Army and has been married to his wife Carla for 10 years. Congratulations. All right. Just a personal note, something I truly appreciate from both Nelson and Fix, they're a pleasure to work with, each one of them, they always have a smile on their face, which I really appreciate. They're very happy to be part of ESPD, their enthusiasm is truly contagious at work, so I tell them that all the time. Congratulations to both of you, thank you very much.
Congrats, thank you very much, thank you Chief.
All right, take pictures.
No, don't be on the edge. All right guys, here we go, and one, two, and a couple more here, and one more. And if their families would like to come up, whoever here, maybe individually families. Okay, oops, here we go, and one, two, and a couple more, and, and this gentleman, you said you, but what happened to your mother-in-law? She's not invited?
Be smart, don't get in trouble, okay?
Okay, all right, all right, I got you. How about you sir, did you have a family here?
No, no sir.
No.
Okay, next up, we have recognition of the city's All-Hazards Incident Management Team led by Chief Lee and Captain Lehman.
Good evening Mayor, members of city council. I'm here to recognize the All-Hazards Incident Management Team. The pandemic started over two years ago, we were prepared, but not quite for the disaster of this type. As you know, we, the team started out in the EOC and we quickly realized that we had to, we couldn't be six feet apart in there, so we moved to Jocelyn Center. We're very fortunate that we had an emergency management coordinator that sent dozens of us employees for classes so that we were prepared to mobilize at a moment's notice. We were also fortunate that we had Captain Jeff Lehman, who was going to start an encore career he didn't know about, and become the incident commander for the All-Hazards Incident Management Team. I'm going to call him up to speak about the team, and he doesn't know this, but we have prepared a plaque for him because really his leadership has been an inspiration for myself and for everyone on the team, and he really kept the spirits up in the team throughout the long enduring time and had, you know, different themes for the day, and Captain Lehman?
That's very nice, thank you, I appreciate it. Good evening Mayor, members of council, first like to thank Chief Lee and Chief Donovan before her for your leadership during the pandemic, unprecedented obviously, no one could have expected that. Thanks to all of you and all the El Segundo leadership for keeping the city prepared, it's not a mistake. You all thought about it ahead of time, we had a bunch of prepared people, we had a bunch of training and people already in place for this, and that's because of your forethought and leadership. Like to thank the women and men of the All-Hazards Incident Management Team for their commitment, this was a very talented group of people, there were a lot of city employees that were involved, collaterally from their regular duties, in addition, there were people that we called in, and I'm looking at the people on the board there, and to show how talented these people really are, we have Dr. Collins on the left there, he's in Saudi Arabia now in a new job, Zach on the top right is in Washington DC for a job, on the left there, Eddie, he was our safety officer, he's in Milwaukee, Wisconsin getting his masters in nursing, Matt over there on the bottom right, he is working for FEMA, he could be anywhere in the world, looks like he's wearing his Marine Corps gear, so I don't know where he's at, but, and then lastly, and maybe most importantly is thanking the citizens and employees for their patience as we worked our way through the pandemic, it was trying for everybody, including the employees, so go through some real quick bullet points of some of the accomplishments of the team. We, they vaccinated or assisted with 3,000 vaccinations, including residents and city employees, facilitated bus transportations to vaccine sites, so once the vaccines started to arrive, but we didn't have vaccine sites close, we got buses and sent people to the vaccine locations, particularly our Park Vista people, people that needed the vaccine quickly. We acquired vaccine booster shots ourselves, provided COVID-19 signage, provided disinfection for city facilities as needed, including right here in the council chambers. We tested, tracked, and documented COVID-19 positive employees, that includes follow-up, making sure they're okay, they're having all their needs met. We provided face coverings, PPEs, and supplies as needed for the, for the city, provided ambassador services for Park Vista, nothing got in and out of Park Vista without coming across one of our team members first and kept those residents safe. Our finance team has received a lot of money in reimbursement from FEMA, which is fantastic, and all the activities have been documented. We've had a total of 32 members throughout the lifespan of the team, and I want to give high credit to Dr. Collins because he was, is one of the examples of your leadership where you had someone in place for this, and he was amazing, so thanks specifically to you, Dr. Collins up there on the left. So Chief Lee and I would like to present some certificates and the incident commander that wound up, wound up the team for us, Tom Allen can help us out here. And then team members, as you get your certificates, if you can just kind of stand over here, and then once we get all of you, we can get some pictures, so. Okay, we got Victor Morales. Tim Tran. Clara Pike. Tomer Kalansky. George Rosemeyer. We got Tom Allen right here, there you go Tom. Barbara Voss, are you here? So I guess now it's time we can get a picture with the team, is that all right with all of you? All right, thank you.
Could the council do that thing where they hop up on top of that thing? You got, could the council go up, up one step higher? The council chamber is not built for this. There you go. Okay, we got everybody's smiling face, action. Here we go, and one, two, and a couple more, and one more. Very good, thank you. Thank you all, just a quick note, I believe we are the first city in the entire South Bay to set up the All-Hazards Incident Management Team, kudos to all of you, and I want to thank my predecessor, former mayor Suzanne Fuentes, because she fought long and hard to have an emergency management coordinator hired, and we were lucky to have Dr. Randy Collins, who helped lead us through that, so we were well-prepared as was stated earlier, and thank you all for your hard work, much appreciated. Okay, next up, we have Chief Lee, talking about a really exciting program she just launched.
Yes Mayor, Member City Council, Chief Lee, I'm here to just give an update on our first annual Fired Up Girls Empowerment Camp, that was a huge success, rather than just talk about it, I'll show a short clip, and then I'll share with you some feedback from one of the girl campers.
What's up El Segundo, Tully Anderson outside, Station Two, we have Fire Engine 31 behind me, it's a very special weekend, Fire Up Girls Empowerment Camp, brought on by the new chief, Deena Lee, maybe one of these young girls will soon be... Maybe one of these young girls will soon be a firefighter.
So this has been a dream of mine for a long time. I've attended other girls' camps at other fire departments, and it was so rewarding, and I couldn't wait to bring it here to El Segundo. I had to recruit women firefighters from other fire departments, because in El Segundo, we only have two. In the smaller departments, there's not too many. So I have some of my colleagues, friends, from Costa Mesa Fire Department, Beverly Hills, Hammett, San Bernardino County, and they're all here helping out, along with the other firefighters.
As a firefighter, there are likely lives on the line, and so you want to go fast. And I want to help people. Whatever I end up doing as a career, I want it to be something that can positively impact the community.
There you go. And try and keep that... If that hand keeps pretty firm, this hand is a little bit looser.
I really think it's very important, especially for us women, because the men get a lot of the, like, recognition for it, and especially if a woman comes out as a firefighter.
The time, effort, and how much they sacrifice for the community and to help others is just... I get, like, more understanding.
I thought it would be very interesting, because my dad's a fire technician, so I wanted to see how the other side of the field would be.
I'm here with El Segundo Fire Department, and for our Fired Up program. And we're going to do an... Go up an aerial ladder to do a vertical ventilation, to break a hole in the roof, to save some people. All right, this is great. We're coming to save some people. All right, we're almost to the top. All right. We're at the top. Perfect. We made it.
Thirty girls from around the region had a rigorous weekend here in El Segundo, but they are leaving tired, empowered, and most certainly, fired up. For El Segundo Media, I'm Tolly Anderson.
Really great job by El Segundo Media, too. So great. Such a great job. So if I could just share with you real quickly, a card that I received from one of the moms. Says, "Dear Chief Lee, I wanted to tell you personally how much we appreciated the Girls Empowerment Camp you organized for last weekend. My daughter Kate, age 12, had the best time and came home so excited to tell us about the amazing and cool things she got to experience. Highlights for her were climbing the 100-foot aerial ladder, using a real ax to break down a door, putting out a real fire, and using the power tool to cut through metal. She was so proud of herself and is keeping the little piece of metal on display in her room. Never before in her life has she expressed any interest in activities of this type, but she came home from your camp talking excitedly about wanting to become a search and rescue worker. She had no idea that you could get a job working in emergency services and be with animals. What you've given these girls is absolutely priceless, opening their eyes to the fact that they can not only do these physically demanding jobs, but they can be great at them and also really enjoy the work. Please continue offering this camp, so that many more girls can benefit from this opportunity. Thank you for your hard work in our community and for spying us all. Best, Shannon Humphries." That right there made... It's so worth it. And I have to give a shout-out to all of our community services members that helped out. The reason it was so great is because it was a collaboration with community services. And Arisia, I don't know if she's here, or she was... Yeah. Was so great. So we're going to do this every year, and we're going to coordinate it with Women's History Month in March. And so just thank you all for your support of this event.
Okay, next up, we have the 30th Annual Big Five Run for Education Proclamation. And that is going to be read by Councilman Nickel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I believe we have committee chairperson Ellen Faustine Barnett here. Is Barry Griffin here as well? To help you receive, or did he run away? No pun intended. Oh, perfect. Well, you guys can meander up while I read this slowly. Proclamation. Whereas the El Segundo Big Five PTA Run for Education was established 30 years ago to create a healthy and fun day for the community to come together to support education. And whereas the Big Five PTA Run for Education is hosted by the El Segundo Council of PTAs benefiting students attending all schools in the district, the Run for Education has developed into the Council of PTA's largest fundraiser, welcoming over 1,500 participants from the community and surrounding areas to the streets of El Segundo to run, jog, or walk the USA Track and Field Certified 5K or 10K course, or kids' fun run through our own... Through our town, supporting our schools. And whereas the funds raised from this event are used to support a wide range of student needs, including technology requests, physical education equipment, departmental supplies, and college and career preparation programs, providing for unique student experiences, as well as supporting district parental education programs. And whereas community support is of the utmost importance with this event, relying on El Segundo Police Department, City of El Segundo, parents from all our schools, high school student volunteers, local businesses, and community members. And whereas, community partners play a critical role in the success of this event, we are fortunate to have Big Five Sporting Goods as the title sponsor of the run, along with presenting sponsors Chevron, Sky One Federal Credit Union, and Sears-Sionide, Kerlyn Job Institute, as well as support of many local businesses who participate in the event's Run Expo and Show Your Shirt and Save promotion. And whereas, the goal of the El Segundo Council PTA is to positively impact the lives of children and families serving its members and its community by providing opportunities and experiences to make El Segundo School District the best it can be. Now therefore, the Mayor and members of City Council of the City of El Segundo, California, hereby proclaim April 30, 2022, as El Segundo Big Five PTA Run for Education Day in El Segundo, and encourage all citizens to take part in the 30th anniversary celebration. Ellen, Tessie, would you guys like to say a little bit about the run?
Thank you, good evening. We really wanted to say thank you very much to all of the people in El Segundo who make this event a success. This is a PTA Council-sponsored event, but really, it is a collaboration with the entire community of El Segundo. The city, the city works department, the police department, the rec and park department, they all work hard together with us to put on this large event. We are expecting between 1,500 and 2,000 participants in the event this year, and that's a real big effort for everyone to work together. So we really appreciate the city's collaboration with the school district and the PTA, and also the local businesses. We have many businesses in town who sponsor the event, and who participate in our expo and our Show Your Shirt and Save Day of savings promotion, and our Chamber of Commerce, who helps to promote that. So it really is a collaborative effort. As a USA Track and Field Certified event, we get many runners from outside of El Segundo, and this is a great way to showcase the City of El Segundo and everything we have to offer here. The businesses, the community, and the schools. So we appreciate everybody working together, and we are very pleased to be back in person, running again this year. So we have... Hopefully, you've seen some of these postcards around town and our posters. And if anybody is interested and hasn't yet signed up, Lisa has postcards. So give her a nod, and she'll give you one. But we'd love to see everybody there on the 30th. If you are not inclined to run or walk, we definitely need volunteers. One of the key things that makes this event work is our... What we call our corner monitors, people who volunteer to manage the corners of all the closed streets. So we are still filling those positions. You can go to our website, esrunforeducation.com. That's the number four, esrunforeducation.com, to either register or volunteer. So thank you.
Mr. Mayor, didn't you make a pledge a couple of years ago to donate a dollar for every person that beat you, or something?
Something like that. Unfortunately, no one of my age would beat me, Scott. I think the city manager is very excited to participate in this event with...
He has been training.
Be on that side over there, or something. I don't know. Then you can take a picture. But stay there, so he can take a picture also. All right, here we go, guys. And... One, two, and a couple more. Hold on one second. No, 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 give me a second. I don't... I didn't have my focusing point where I wanted it. I want to make sure it doesn't get... I don't get blurry results. Okay, here we go. And one more. Thank you so much.
Tonight's social media. Come on, we got to do something. Yes, I will. The councilman's challenge?
Okay, next up, we have National Donate Life Month. We have a proclamation, and I believe that's Councilman Drew. Thank you.
Yeah, so accepting the National Donate Life Month is Dave Holland. Is Dave here? Yes, he is. From the kidney and pancreas recipient and One Legacy Ambassador. So proclamation. Whereas organ, eye tissue, marrow, and blood donation are life-giving acts recognized worldwide as expressions of compassion to those in need. And whereas more than 100,000 individuals nationwide, and more than 20,000 in California, are currently on the national organ transplant waiting list. And on average, 17 people die each day while waiting. And whereas the need for donated organs is especially urgent in Hispanic, Latino, and African-American communities. And whereas a single individual's donation of the heart, lungs, liver, kidneys, pancreas, and small intestine can save up to eight lives. And whereas donation of tissue can save and heal the lives. Whereas organ donors saved more than 40,000 lives last year, the most ever. And whereas any person can register to be an organ, eye, and tissue donor, regardless of age or medical condition. And whereas being a registered donor does not impact quality of life-saving medical care a person receives in an emergency. And whereas California residents can sign up with the Donate Life California Donor Registry online at any time by visiting www.donatelifeCalifornia.org, or for Spanish speakers, www.vitaCalifornia.org. And whereas California residents can sign up to be an organ, eye, and tissue donor when applying for or renewing their driver's license or ID cards at the California Department of Motor Vehicles. Whereas California residents interested in saving a life through living kidney donation may visit www.livingdonationCalifornia.org. Now therefore, the Mayor and members of the City Council, the City of El Segundo, California, in recognition of National Donate Life Month, hereby proclaim the month of April 2022 as DMV Donate Life Month. In El Segundo, in doing so, we encourage all Californians to check yes online or when applying for or renewing their driver's license or ID card at the DMV.
Mr. Holland?
Hi. First, on behalf of Donate Life and One Legacy, we sincerely appreciate the support from the city. If I can share why this is important to me. I developed type 1, adult onset type 1 diabetes in my 30s. Typically, type 1 is a juvenile onset. So my case is a bit of an anomaly. My kidneys failed. Eighteen years ago this month, my brother, my living brother, gave me a kidney. Sixteen years ago, in February, I received a pancreas from a deceased donor, a 16-year-old young lady who passed away in a car accident. She registered at the DMV as a donor when she got her license, and shortly thereafter was in an accident. Only because of my heroes am I able to stand here and talk to you today, and continue to enjoy the blessings... Excuse me, the blessings of life, which include 37 years and counting at the Boeing Company here in town. So, again, thank you very much for your recognition of the cause. As you can see, it's very personal to me. So again, thank you.
All right. Here we go, guys. Couple photos. One, two, and... And one more. Thank you so much.
All right, next up, we have Councilman Purstuck, that's going to talk about Earth Day, and has a proclamation as well.
Yes, so last but not least, we have proclamation for Earth Day. So whereas the global community now faces extraordinary challenges such as global health issues, food and water shortages, and economic struggles. And whereas all people, regardless of race, gender, income, or geography, have a moral right to a healthy, sustainable environment with economic growth. And whereas, we are all caretakers of our planet and have an obligation to combat climate change and environmental degradation to preserve the earth's beauty and resources. And whereas, a green economy can be achieved on the individual level through educational efforts, public policy, and consumer activism campaigns. And whereas, it is necessary to broaden and diversify this global movement to achieve maximum success. Now therefore, the Mayor and the members of the City Council of El Segundo, California, hereby proclaim April 22, 2022, as Earth Day in El Segundo, and encourage all citizens to support environmental initiatives and promote others to undertake similar actions. And today, we have accepting the proclamation is the El Segundo High School AP Biology and Medical Intervention teacher, Mrs. Masonet, along with her ESHS 11th grade students, Lori Thomas, Paris Sanchez-Mendez, Eleanor Gukin, Julie Hermana, and Marisa Gagin... Or Ga... Gadian. Okay, I got it.
Judea, yeah. And she's not here, so it's okay.
Okay, there you go.
I'm really going to give it up to the kids to talk about what they're doing, because it's amazing. And the biggest reason that we started this kind of movement this year is that we really feel that it's the youth that need to push this forward. You know, the climate change, the environmental sustainability. It's going to be up to them to save the planet for us, right? So take it away, please.
First and foremost, I would like to thank the City Council members and Mayor, my lovely teacher, Ms. Masonet, and my friends for giving us this opportunity and platform to voice out our opinions and do, like, really good thing, and make a change for environmentalism.
And we just want to emphasize by doing this that the future of our planet is really in the hands of the youth. That's really what we're trying to do with our South Bay Youth Climate Summit, which is going to be held this Saturday at the high school at 10:00 AM. We really want to encourage the youth to care about the environment, because it really is our future. So we're going to have businesses there to promote sustainability and show how they're being environmentally conscious. And we just... We really like people to come and learn more about how they can preserve the environment for future generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you. And when was that? Can you just repeat when that summit was? Saturday, at what time? 10:00 AM, 4:00 PM at the high school. And anybody is welcome? Okay, we'd like to get a picture.
Yeah, thanks for your leadership, ladies. Let's get a picture.
All right. Here we go. Everybody's good. Here we go. One, two, and... Couple photos, one more. And one more, fine. All right, there we go. All right, there we go. All right, bear with us, we're halfway through special presentations. Just kidding, we're onto public communications. That was well worth it, it's been a long time, it's good to see everyone back. We've got quite a few speakers this evening, so we're gonna limit comments to two minutes each, and if you want to read the first one, Madam Clerk, please.
Mary Jane Crafton? Hi. My name is Mary Jane Crafton. I've been a resident of El Segundo for 50 years, actually 51 this year. But anyway, we have a problem. Pickleball is taking over our tennis courts. And pickleball's wonderful, I've played that too, but we really do need to either build new pickleball courts, and there's plenty of room down at the park, or use the volleyball courts, the racquetball courts, the paddle tennis courts, but not take our pickleball court, our tennis courts. On Thursdays, I have to go over to ISIS to play, and I've always had, never had a problem getting courts before, but now I guess they have a tournament. Most of the people that play, I think, are from out of town. I'm not sure, I haven't done any research on it. But I'm hoping you'll consider building some pickleball courts and leaving our tennis courts for the tennis people. Oh, and the parking is really a problem on Saturdays, because instead of four people on a tennis court, you have 16, and they've taken two of our courts away on Saturdays. And it's dangerous, because Court 6, they have the lines up, one of our players fell and hurt herself, and it really is dangerous playing tennis on a pickleball court with the lines. So I hope you'll consider building some pickleball courts. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crafton.
Tracy Miller-Zarniki.
It's been a long time since I've been in this room. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of city council, and everyone else in the room and at home watching. My name is Tracy Miller-Zarniki, and I currently serve as a chair of your city's Public Works/Environmental Committee. Firstly, I want to give props to the ESUSD students that we just saw here. I have great faith in the future, seeing that the youth knows environmental stewardship is alive and well and keeping that going, and it actually gives me hope also that your recognition of that effort will follow up with some actions beyond the words that you just put in that proclamation, and will support more environmental programs in our city as well. So, great job on that. But in this moment, I'm here on behalf of the committee to wish all of you a happy Earth Week, and to invite our community to come and talk to your friendly environmental committee this week in person at the farmer's market. We're gonna revamp our annual time there during Earth Week to, this week, talk about composting. And we are gonna focus on composting and complying with the organic waste ordinance that you all passed last December. And to do that, you'll also have members of the EDCO team on hand to hand out the little kitchen caddies that they can store food waste in for proper disposal in the green bin at some point during the week. So, we'll be there to help give tips on how to do that in a clean and efficient way. We'll also have some of the students that you just saw here to talk about their upcoming Youth Climate Summit, and we'll have seed planting with some of the younger kids, and coloring and other activities as well. So, we will, oh, also let them do some play sorting, so that they know what goes in what bins, and that's something that we're reinstating in schools as well. Grades of Green is coming back into our schools to teach kids from the youngest age that this is what we do, it's just what we do, it's not a problem. So, even if folks can't come to see us in person, we hope that this week, people are inspired to look at their home practices and maybe make at least one green change for the better. So, maybe you can replace some of the thirsty yard plants that you have with less water needy natives, or maybe you need to check that your sprinklers aren't running after sunset, or are only running after sunset and before sunrise, and that they're not watering sidewalks and other nonplanted areas as well. Maybe folks going back into the workspace, do you have water bottle filling stations for your employees? Do you only print papers double-sided if you have to print something? To our restaurant owners, have you thought about switching to cardboard instead of some form of plastic in your takeout containers? Can you, well, actually, if you guys didn't hear this, today LA County passed an ordinance for the 1.1 million residents to cut back further on single-use plastic and expand, actually get rid of expanded polystyrene. So, this is coming all around us, and I bet we can do that here as well in just as easy of a way. So, with my last moment, I'll just say, happy Earth Week again, come see us at the farmer's market.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller-Zarniki.
Jonathan Kretko?
Good evening, my name is Jonathan Sverko. I'm a resident of Redondo Beach and would like to share with you what has happened with us and our city with regards to cannabis initiative. Our city council was one of the first to thoroughly examine the initiative and found a variety of problematic issues, amongst them being no tax to the city and local control being taken away from the city and how to regulate. Our issues rightly identified that the city council, by the city council, was the fact that the initiative established an inequitable application process by which they establish zoning that limits competition from properties that they intend to or already have acquired, and then requires to, it requires an applicant to acquire the property prior to applying. In Redondo, this was exposed to be true. The backers of the initiative, Barry Walker of Trade Craft Farms, and Elliot Lewis and Damian Martin of Catalyst, were both reported in the local paper to have actually already acquired properties. This is exactly what Redondo and Hermosa Cannabis Committees had recommended not requiring as part of the application process. The entire selection process initiative is entirely inequitable, making it virtually impossible for any resident in the city to effectively apply. Similarly, our residents and council members all shared stories of signature gatherers misrepresenting what the initiative does. After Redondo City Council exposed the shady intentions behind the initiatives, the backers went on a video to reveal that they had indeed hired Manhattan Beach Councilmember Richard Montgomery to consult for them to push their bad policies. Followed by that announcement, they also announced that they were funding an effort to recall one of the council members in Redondo Beach in retaliation for exposing the truth. Now we see throughout the beach cities that it seems that the Beach Life Festival has this week been working with the backers to promote the initiative in their magazine that can be found around town. Not only has this magazine advertised the Haasaw initiatives against all of our beach cities on the back page, but it features articles inside about one of the backers and a second article that advertises delivery into the beach cities, which currently remains illegal. Redondo, Hermosa, and Manhattan have all decided to reject the initiative and instead to work with residents to establish a competing measure. Redondo had a resident advisory committee, and Hermosa just finished doing the same. Please consider doing the same here in El Segundo.
Thank you, Mr. Sverko.
Kayle Yul?
Kayle Yul? Yep.
Hello, hi, Council, my name's Kyle Yul. I'm a resident of El Segundo, and I've grown up here and actually graduated from the high school. As Jonathan just mentioned, I was one of the people that happily signed this initiative ballot, because I did have people here in the city. I remember doing the LA car show we have here on Main Street. I was approached, and I said, "Yeah, definitely, let's have a dispensary in our town." I was all for it. But reading into the initiative, I realized it's a mistake, it should not happen. We should create our own initiative for cannabis, because big thing for towns to have a dispensary is be able to get the taxes from that dispensary. This initiative, we won't get anything. It's just beneficial for whoever proposed it to the town. That's my two cents on the matter.
Thank you, Mr. Yul.
Jack Baker?
All right. Do I just have two minutes, or five? Just two? Is it normally five? I prepared for five.
It's under the council's discretion, we have a lot of speakers, as we do tonight, we limit it to, thank you.
Can I ask for five? Can we get like a?
No.
No?
Thank you, though. You can ask, but you're not gonna get it.
Okay. I did come to all the other previous cannabis meetings, Owen, sat there basically by myself, so, thank you for the two minutes, though. All right, so I'll get to it, obviously you can tell by my clothes, I'm a dad here in town, I just came from Little League, which is to say that I'm just like a lot of people here in town. Involved at the schools, I've lived here for 10 years, my kids are involved in the sports. So let's get to it. Thank you again for the two minutes. First, I am 100% pro cannabis. I am 100% pro cannabis coming to this town. I am 100% against it coming to town in this ballot. So, for everyone listening, for every resident here, for everybody who signed the petition, probably under false pretenses, vote no on this measure when it comes to a ballot, even if you are pro cannabis. That is who I am. I'm pro cannabis, I want the city to step up, write their own ordinance, do it the proper way. Like the gentleman just mentioned, there's no tax component attached to the current ballot measure, so we get no money out of the deal. Carol, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Perzdok and Drew seemed to be the two leading that discussion the last time, so thank you for that. That is where we need to head. We need to get a tax component on this, we need to, yeah, really screwed me with this five minutes here. Anyway, the last time, we sat here, we went through this whole thing, the city attorney wrote a very nice report basically telling you not to go with option A, which is this ballot. I sat here and listened to the whole Hyperion thing, and the whole problem was lack of control. Lack of control, you guys are angry about oversight and lack of control. This will give you no control. Don't let another Hyperion come in here and tell you what to do. Mayor Boils, you described the issue with the ballot as a hostage situation and said it was a lose-lose situation, yet still wanted to go down that path. The city attorney outlined the options, do your own ordinance, put it on the ballot, yet you still wanted to drive this right into that wall. Councilman Pimentel, your only concern was that you didn't like the guy who came and knocked on your door for the signatures. Well, if you don't like the guy, then we should not deal with them. Keep in mind, 2,500 people signed this petition, which has more than voted for you guys on city council.
Thank you for your time.
So it's not an insignificant number, so you should address this.
You're done, thank you, Mr. Baker, appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you.
Don Broniker?
Good evening. I'm a 25-year resident of El Segundo. My three children went through the schools here, you can probably have my two minutes. I've gotta get to the Kings game and the Dodger game here very quickly. A bad initiative, it doesn't bring any tax dollars into El Segundo, I can't believe we're entertaining it. It's ridiculous. We should be entertaining only things that are gonna bring in tax dollars to do education. I was an educator in a local school district for the last 25 years. I say shame on you that you're entertaining an initiative that's not gonna bring tax dollars into this city, and it's, what a great city it is, right? One of the best in all the South Bay. But once again, how you are entertaining something that's not gonna bring tax dollars and the control locally to you, shameful. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, just to be clear, and I don't usually depart from protocol here, but we never said we wouldn't pursue a tax measure, that's part of this discussion, so hang tight, feel free to stay tuned.
Thank you.
After you used the shame word five times. But anyway, just pointing something out. Next up, please, thank you, who's up?
Sergio Ortega?
Good evening. I appreciate this opportunity to express my concerns about the use and facilities at the park. I'm a resident here since 2011. I've been in this community since 2009, and I've been teaching tennis for a little bit over 40 years. So I have a little bit of experience to help grow the facility. When I came here in 2009, this was the best park, tennis courts at the park in LA County and even Southern California. Today, I don't think we are even halfway on the list. And that's because of several aspects of the courts that have not been addressed over the years, even though in 2014, we resurfaced the courts. Even though, I think, four or five years ago, we enhanced the lighting system. Even with all those money that was spent, today, we are not up to par. And why I say that, because I would like to organize a tennis tournament, and I can bring, in this way, business, I can bring participants, I can use the restaurants, the hotels in the area. The problem that there is, is that the courts are cracked, some of them very bad, and nobody's addressing that. Also, the lighting system has an effect pretty bad on the player itself. And thus, those are little things that have not been addressed. I hope that the fall 2023 will be different, because there will be an issue between pickleball, pickleball using the courts, tennis court, me, the company that I'm running, using the tennis courts, and also the residents using the courts.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Nick? Nick, I'm not gonna attempt your last name. Leepskin, thank you, thank you very much. I do not want to.
I'm gonna keep this as fast as I can, and thank you for having me, I really do appreciate it. So a couple of weeks ago, I was invited to an information session to learn more about this issue of cannabis sales, or potential cannabis sales here in El Segundo, and I'll be the first to say, I showed up unprepared. I didn't really read the email, I didn't know why I was there. I thought I was there to share my feelings about the legal use of medical and recreational cannabis, and I was wrong. But I am glad that I did show up that night, because what I learned was that why I was there that night and why several of us are here tonight is in fact not at all about our personal feelings on medical and recreational cannabis. Rather, it's about our community and whether we want to be fiscally sound and proactive as it relates to our destiny. And this, to me, is an issue bigger than like any one sector of business, but maybe speaks volumes about how we as a community want to do business. So what I learned that night had a lot to do with Proposition 64, which I'm sure you're all aware of. First, what I learned was that it was designed to give power to local governments to write their own ordinances, and thus, as I mentioned, take control of their destiny as it relates to the sale of cannabis in their community. The second thing I learned was that when businesses such as these are in your town, it creates a unique and rather particularly profitable financial windfall in the form of tax dollars, which we've heard a lot of people talk about tonight, and that obviously benefits our community. And I also learned that a large majority of people back in 2016 here in El Segundo voted in favor of Proposition 64. So once again, here I was at this point of this meeting, without having to share or really even consider my personal feelings about the issue, I was left with two assertions about the potential sale of cannabis here in our town. It seems like our town wants it, and that it's coming, that it's sort of inevitable. And so it left me with that question, do we as a community want to take control of this issue, so that it benefits our city, or do we want to leave that control in the hands of others? Who these other people are that have gotten the required signatures, such that they're measured on the ballot, I don't need to speak to them. I don't know a whole lot, and what I've been told isn't so wonderful, but it seems like others have been speaking about them.
Time is up.
My time's up. Anyhow, thank you, and I.
Thank you, Mr. Leepskin.
Write our own ordinance in time.
Thank you.
Sheena Parks?
Hello. I'm Sheena Parks, local resident. I have two quick things. First is, I was here before you guys back in December regarding scoreboard, which I've been working hand-in-hand with Elias Sassoon on, which has been very lovely, and currently my scoreboard sits in the city yard. The structural engineer found the existing piers to be sound and safe, and everything was good, but when it was moved forward to the city, there... was good, but when it was moved forward to the city, there, a permit could not be located. I'm assuming this scoreboard was put in at George Brett Field back in 70s, maybe? I'm not quite sure. My question to you guys, can we possibly just use the existing standards considering they've been found to be safe as they are? The footings are good. It would save the city about $30,000, and I still don't have my scoreboard up, which is just a bummer for us at El Segundo Little League. And I know it's a minor thing, but I'd take one minute for that, and that's to you guys. Next would be the cannabis ballot measure. I'm urging you guys just to write your own ordinance so we can keep the tax dollars here and the control here and all of that, and that's basically it. I didn't use all my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Parks.
Liz Garnholz?
We used to get five minutes. Anglewood gives you one, so we're still better, El Segundo. I am no on number 15. I am yes on number 22. Vote no on the ballot. I have a question about number 17, which is relaxing teleconferencing requirements on the Brown Act. I also want to know what happened to public input at the end. Two questions I would like answered. On April 20th, 2021, on a four-to-one vote, you folks voted to have a sidewalk on the 400 block of Mariposa and 300 block of Pine, both on the west side. These are busy streets. Both of these sites have four-way stop signs on the east and the west. However, there is no sidewalks, and we're forced to walk in the street. Seeing as you voted four-to-one to have sidewalks put in, I'd appreciate it very much if you accepted this contract. Okay, item 22. I never saw the petition. I don't know anything about it. But I am against commercial cultivation, manufactured products, retail, and wholesale of marijuana in all of El Segundo. For years, I've heard at this council and adults say, "Say no, kids. I know it's hard, but say no to drugs." Well, adults, you now have the opportunity on November 8th to show your courage and to show that you have the kachingus to vote no. In other words, put your money where your mouth is. I have a friend who lives in Venice. They have one of these shops. His shop requires cash. What does that mean? They have armed guards outside the business. I sure as you-know-what don't want that in El Segundo. Also, once upon a time.
Time is up.
What?
That's two minutes. Thanks, Ms. Garnhols. I'll see you down the block. I'll listen to you tomorrow.
You guys.
Thank you. We have 20-something comments to get through. Thank you, Ms. Garnhols.
Answer my two questions, please.
The city manager, I'm sure he noted, I made note of as well at the end. He'll address that thing.
Vicki Fox?
Vicki Foy.
I apologize.
No worries. Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak this evening. I'm not a resident of El Segundo, but I'm a swimmer at Wisburn El Segundo Pool Complex, and there's been an ongoing problem, I'm sure you're aware of, since the middle of March. I think it's been the competition pool is shut. The hardest thing for swimmers such as myself is we don't know why. My suggestion, if the issue is money, and I don't know that it is, is to have a fundraiser. Post something on the wall at the pool, like a thermometer. The pool isn't feeling well. Help it feel better and ask for contributions in the community also. If it's a monetary thing, and if it's not, it would help a great deal to let people who swim there, if you can't tell them why it's still shut, what the difficulty is, at least to give us some kind of timeline. Because what's happened is I can't swim there as often. I'm searching around various other pools, and gasoline is expensive, as you know. So, to go far-flung, I live in Mar Vista. To go down to Redondo or Manhattan Beach, it's a lot of gas. So, at any rate, if there's some way in notifying the community that uses the pool, not just the residents, but the people who use it continually, if there's a way we can help, let us know. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Foy. And Daryl George is going to give a presentation on the pool heater situation when we get through the public comments.
Michelle Keldorf?
Hello. Thank you for having me. My name's Michelle Keldorf. I'm here as both a resident and a planning commission member to talk about item 22, the cannabis ordinance, or I should say cannabis ballot measure, much like, well, unlike some of our previous speakers, I am admittedly agnostic on cannabis sales, retail sales in town. However, what we agree on is that the ballot initiative is a very bad measure for the city to even be considering third-party control over something that is so significant, both from a, obviously, the tax revenue potential and just where are, where businesses come into town and who operates them. It's too critical to really leave that up to a third-party operator, especially, I don't know if you've seen anything or read anything about who this business is, but they do not present themselves as the type of operators that we would like to have in town. So, when I was here a few weeks ago on this topic, I was really encouraging at the time council to write a counter-initiative. And while I still think that that is vastly superior to having this initiative stand alone, I have done some research, as I'm sure you all have, in the intermittent time, and it feels like to have the most control from a city perspective and ordinance would be the best path forward. And part of that is that I've learned if we have a counter-initiative on the ballot that passes, anytime we want to make a change to that moving forward, we have to then again put it on the ballot. It's expensive. That doesn't happen very often, right? That we can roll that into some sort of a general or national election. That would cost the city a lot of money. We have to spend time educating people, getting the message out. So, an ordinance written by us, by staff, approved by you, would really help us maintain that control. Okay, I've got 10 seconds. I want to echo, I'm curious to hear a status update on the Aquatic Center, and I understand it's got, it's a big-ticket item. I want us to consider that when we are continuing to approve expenditures on the plunge, which I know is a great community amenity. However, we only have one competition pool, and it's under the weather, so we got to prioritize that. Thank you.
Ryan Baldino?
Hi, guys. Good evening. I'm Ryan Baldino. I live on Palm, so in your planning commission. I'm here to offer my help. So, I agree with Michelle. The best thing we could do is get an ordinance where we have some control. We definitely need to get a ballot measure to tax, and we have to assume that this ordinance is going to pass. That's just the reality of it. Nobody wants it. Nobody wants a weed shop on Main Street. That's been a constant at all, the planning commission and City Council. But we've come to the point where we have to do something. So, if you're looking to set up a subcommittee, I'm happy to volunteer my time to work on that, to help write an ordinance. It has to be done immediately. If you need help writing the ballot measure for tax, I will donate my time for that. I'm willing to knock on doors and convince everybody in town why they should not vote on this ordinance drafted by some outside company who's trying to come in and tell us how we run our town, because that's something that I won't stand for. So, whatever you need from me, I'm here. I'm willing to work to get things done so that we can maintain some control over this town that we all love. All right? Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Baldino.
All righty, guys. I'm going to try this again. Is it Mica or McKay Long?
Good evening. My name's Michael Long, and I, and I do not support the hostile cannabis initiative that was funded by outside special interests, which takes away local control and does not provide taxes. I strongly encourage the council to consider working with residents to write a competing measure that prioritizes public health and safety by taxing and regulating local control of cannabis in El Segundo. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Long.
Kelly? Thank you. I appreciate you.
I'm Kelly Schofeld-Guica. I've been a resident for my life, and I now raise three children here in this town. I specifically wanted to speak about the programs at the recreation park and the absence of the vendors that we used to have to offer the arts program. And my kids have participated and grown up through the arts program, through the rec, and they're missing. And currently, my position is president of the board of the El Segundo Youth Drama Boosters, and I'm called regularly. My daughter misses it, but I'm always talked about by the parents about how the kids are suffering because they have been without their main activity now for two years. That's their communication activity and their socialization activity and sometimes just their movement activity. And I've reached out several times to our new clubhouse director, Rachel Cummings, who I think is doing a great job, but she's constantly telling me it's an insurance issue that's going on here in the city. And the insurance issue has to do with a new insurance that we require for our vendors to hold subsequent to COVID for protection, safety, I'm not really sure. I've inquired about the cost of this insurance and found out that it's, it's expensive for our vendors whom are not paid that much for the programs in which they run, so it's causing us not to have any of these programs available anymore. And I just wanted to come and let you know that the summer brochure is going to be finalized at the end of April, and it would be nice if we could see a youth drama program up there. It's been two years, which means eight shows have been taken away from the kids, and it really comes down to $860 per show. And that's all I really go on to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schofeld.
That's all the cards I have. Anyone else?
Anyone else here liking to address the public comment section? I don't think so. Okay, we're going to close public communications, and I'm going to ask the city managers, quite a bit there, to address in terms of follow-up, please.
Yes, thank you, mayor and council. Let me speak to the matter of the operation of the pool at the Aquatic Center. Back in late February, early March, we started to see a fluctuation of the temperature, the water temperature in the pool, and it slowly, or quickly got worse from there in terms of identifying the heaters as a problem at the pool. I quickly asked our public works director to engage a specialized engineering firm to look at the pool heaters, identify what was going wrong and, and what the situation was, and, and thank you. We took care of that immediately. The report was done, very comprehensive report, and indeed, the heaters, the two heaters at the pool were shown to be not only underperforming, but, but, but certain design flaws, frankly, in the pool heaters. And this was from the original report that was done by the Wisburn Unified School District with their engineering firm, their, their architects and so forth. So, I quickly began to discuss this with Mr. Blake Silver. The school superintendent forwarded him the, this report by our engineering firm that was hired to identify the problems. And yes, the pool heaters being replaced is a costly undertaking. They're, they're projecting somewhere between $350,000 to $500,000. Shared all of this with Mr. Silver, the superintendent. At this point, he is working with his staff and his board right now to discuss what, what if any recourse they have with the design firm that originally designed the heaters to those, to the pool, and I'll be meeting with him actually first thing tomorrow morning. I tried to get the meeting for today to have a more thorough report on where, what the position was of Wisburn, but I will have that tomorrow from them in terms of replacing the heaters, the timing involved to do that, and then also identifying how the, they will be paid for. So, I'll have a more thorough report to you.
Mr. George, can I just to eliminate it further? I mean, we had, we could find the funds tomorrow to fix the pool. The problem is, we are not allowed to direct those funds to fix the pool because of a very specific due process for the public facility. Can you touch on that a bit?
Yes. The fact that this, this pool and the, all of the infrastructure for the pool was designed by the school district, ultimately, those plans were approved as they are with all school district plans by what's called the state architect. So, these plans go up to Sacramento. The state architect reviews the plans, approves the plans and so forth. So, that process needs to take place again to replace these heaters. So, it's not just a maintenance fix. I mean, it really, you need a whole new heating system. In fact, you may even need three heaters instead of two, is what the report ultimately said. So, that is why Wisburn has to take the lead on this effort. But, but I did share with the superintendent at the city in any way we can help to expedite the process, assist in, in whatever they need to, to make sure that this effort is undertaken as quickly and expeditiously as possible.
Can you also talk about timing? I know we have to go through a very extensive RFP request, request for proposal process. What is the timing like? I know I had, we heard a question about that.
Yes. Well, we, well, it depends on how long, well, since we are not the lead agency on, on this fix, it really is up to the Wisburn School District to decide how quickly they can take, they can do this. So, I'm expressing a sense of urgency on our behalf and, in fact, even stating that we will assist with that process. But potentially, you're looking, and Elias, correct me if I'm wrong, we're probably looking at, at, at least a three-to-six-month process potentially, if, if it goes according to the way that the school district plans are. Now, again, if we can step in and assist them, it could be another, another avenue that we may be able to take, should the council desire that.
Is it possible, considering the joint use agreement, that the facilities are their responsibility and they have to perform their contractual obligation and that, is it possible that they could borrow against the equipment fund that we pay into? There's a substantial amount of money in that.
Yes, there is a, well, yes, they are looking at that, and in fact, within that joint agreement, there is a replacement fund that they are obligated to deposit, I believe, $40,000 a year into that fund. And of course, with, I think with three years, maybe starting the fourth year within that agreement, so there should be at least $120,000 to potentially $160,000 in that fund.
So, to Ms. Foy's comment, one thing we talked about was the community does not know why this thing is down, and I think we have a correctable here that we need to address immediately, whether it is on our website or whether it's through social media to say exactly what is going on and why it's going on. I think I can safely say that the five of us up here field at least three to five calls a day on this or emails, and the problem is, they don't know. So, that is something that we really have to address as soon as humanly possible. Thank you.
Absolutely.
I had another question. Wisburn School Board, do they meet next week on Tuesday? Do we have that calendar? Because for anyone who, I was just thinking, anyone who came here to speak to us about the heaters and wanting to express the urgency on getting this fixed, that is the board they should really be talking to, because we're here with our wallets open, ready to go, and we can't. And so, we really need them, and you, I appreciate your voice in Mr. Silver's ear, but having their board potentially push that forward would be very helpful.
And they do meet the second, fourth Thursdays.
Okay, yeah, what struck me with Ms. Foy's comments, too, is I know we put stuff out in the public, and it seems like it's settled a little bit with our residents, but she has a great point. They're not, if they don't live here, they're not seeing anything. We probably don't have anything up at the facility explaining the issue, I would imagine. And if we don't, we probably should.
We will, we will take care of that.
Okay, there were other comments, Daryl, on, let's see here, the tennis courts, quite a few about those, the condition of, and potential conflict with, I think they were referring to the tournament that we're considering this evening, the pickleball tournament, and then the scorecard.
Yeah, there was also a question about the telecommuting item that's on the, and I can have our city attorney quickly describe that item.
Yes, this will, it's item 17 when this comes to you. This is to extend the ability to telecommute, have virtual. extend the ability to telecommute, have virtual city council meetings, at least for another 30 days. The governor's order allows public agencies to do this with a lot less red tape than is normally required to be adhered to for regard to public meetings. They are still open to the public, they are still noticed pursuant to the Brown Act, they are still viewable by the public. It just makes it easier for the city council members to attend virtually if necessary. I don't know that we're going to be doing this one more time. At the moment, I mean, we're coming to the end of this pandemic, there's there's been a lot of time in the past, we thought it was all over, we staff said, let's put it on here one more time and this will probably be the last time, so long as things stay as they currently are, but that's why it's on here.
That's an agendized item though, so we can't discuss it now, right?
That's correct. And then there's also a question about public communications. At the end of the meeting, there did use to be two public communications on the agenda, one at the beginning and the one at the end. I don't remember exactly when the one at the end dropped off. I want to say, what's that? Probably a couple of years ago.
It was during the pandemic.
Yeah, it was during the pandemic.
Yeah. There generally hasn't been a lot of people that speak during the second public communications, but it did use to be on there.
Then there's tennis courts and a scoreboard item.
On the, regarding the, I can speak to the current situation with the pickleball tournament that's coming up. I know our arrangement with the event coordinator for that tournament is that, yes, they will be utilizing an existing tennis court to create, to stripe for pickle for the pickleball tournament, but part of the agreement is that they will restore those, they will restore the tennis court back to its original condition after the event. Now, in terms of long-term, that's a question that I'll discuss with our Community Services Director in terms of where to go with that.
And that's the thrust of the questions is about the long-term balance. I think that some of the tennis players perceive that we're getting a lot of one side of the usage equation. So I think that's and full disclosure, I live next door to one of those public speakers, so I'm familiar with the argument. One item, this is a question for the clerk. I know we had a speaker having misgivings about their signature. Can they retract a signature after it's been certified by the county? I don't think they can, right? There's a window that they can retract a signature.
They would have to retract before we send it to the county.
Scoreboard real quick, Daryl, there was a hangup, yeah.
Okay, I'll have our Public Works Director.
Hi, yeah, with the scoreboard, I can respond to that. So I heard the comments, but I'm not so sure if everything that was said was accurate. So we looked at the existing foundation for the breadfield scoreboard and the existing peers and I was involved very deeply in the process, was not designed or built that would meet today's code. I really tried very hard, tried to save that, but I couldn't because not only it does not meet the code, it wasn't built, it was, the concrete wasn't poured properly. There was no reinforcement bar in it. So I tried everything I could to see if there's anywhere in the code where I could borrow a sentence or two to fit it. I couldn't. So I resorted back to the drawing board. We got an engineer who designed the foundations that is approved. The city, the city building official signed off on it. In fact, they issued a permit already and we are in process of advertising. In fact, we advertised the project and the low bidder came out to be about a little over $30,000. We're going to be awarding that project pretty soon. At the meantime, we fixed the scoreboard. So the games could continue and we're not going to take down the existing scoreboard till the new one is erected, installed. It's beautiful, it's digital, we have it saved, saved in a proper place, it's a secure place. So we'll install that as soon as the foundation is poured and it's going to look beautiful.
City Attorney, for point of clarification on the public comment. Isn't it at council's discretion at the end of the meeting, if we so choose to, could we not reopen public communication?
We could, yes.
Okay. So if we see someone sitting waiting and they have something to say at the end of the meeting prior to adjournment, we could make a motion to reopen public communication, hear a public comment at the end if we so choose to. So we don't have to worry about putting it back on the agenda.
If it involves a stop sign, do we have to?
Yes.
All right, anything else? Yeah, Councilman Drew.
Actually, the last speaker that talked about the youth drama program, can you shed some light on that as to what the issue is there? Because it seems as all the sports and everything else comes back online, trying to figure out what the holdup would be on this.
Good evening, Council. Yes, of course, we are having current discussions with the director for the youth program. And we are trying to work out some, some situation with the insurance. It is pretty expensive for them and as the insurance has to be purchased now, it's purchased for each individual vendor. So it's very difficult for them to afford that. So we are looking forward to a meeting with their director. We've had meetings, several meetings off and on with regards to the youth program. We're trying to bring it back so that it works. And so I think in the next two weeks, we'll have our last meeting and we're trying to work the situation out. We are bringing youth drama back.
All right, is this, the insurance increase, is this explicitly because of the COVID waiver and things like that that are in there, or is this just a matter of insurance in general?
It's a matter of insurance in general.
All right, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Okay, that wraps up public communication. And we have a procedural motion, read all ordinances and agenda, and I'm sorry, ordinances and resolutions on the agenda by title only. Do I have a motion to do so?
Jerusso moves.
Thank you, second?
Nichols, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, okay. We're on a consent, and I just want to note for the record that Mayor Pro Tem and I will not be weighing in on item 11. So do we have any pulls from the consent? So when we do the vote, we'll just, Mayor Pro Tem and I will vote separately. No pulls. Okay, why don't you guys do item 11 first? Would someone like to move approval on 11?
Jerusso moves.
Nichols, second.
Great, and then we will not vote, but the three of you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Great, 3-0. All right. And we're on to then, do we have a motion for items 10, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, and 17? Wait, did I miss a couple? I did, yeah. Eight, excuse me, eight, nine, 10, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, and 17.
First, six moved.
Okay, we have first, we have second.
Jeru, second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 5-0. Sidewalks are going in. Mrs. Garnols, I know it's been a long journey. Thank you for being patient.
But 30 more days of permissive zooming in to meetings.
All right, we have, next up, we moved a couple of things around on the agenda because we have someone here, we have a representative from Topgolf, so item one, special order of business, special meeting item. This is in conjunction with the regularly scheduled city council meeting, this is special meeting agenda item. Center Call, Topgolf's request to lower the adjustment percentage on the community benefit payment from 10% to 7.5% every five years regarding the Topgolf driving lease payments. The city had previously granted Topgolf the right to change the par four hole to two par three holes on the Lakes Golf Course in exchange for the 10% adjustment every five years. And Mr. George, would you like to take it away?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, as you stated, this, as you know, after what, roughly eight years of negotiations, planning, permitting and so forth, a very successful opening of Topgolf was had a couple of weeks ago. One of the final items to be considered as a result of the number of agreements, a series of agreements that between the city and Topgolf, one of the items was a community benefit payment from Topgolf to the city. And part, one of the items attached to this benefit was a request to change, as you said, the par four hole to two par three holes on the Lakes Golf Course. In exchange for that, the city and Topgolf discussed a annual accelerator, if you will, on that $200,000. And various percentages were discussed. And this evening's item, we've arrived at a seven and a half percent adjustment every five years on that $200,000 community fund benefit. And that's up for your consideration tonight. And as you said, we have a former representative of Topgolf on the, our Zoom, Zoom screen.
Tanner, thanks for being here. Would you like to weigh in?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and council members. Yeah, so currently in the, in the contracts, there's a 0% escalation and and so, you know, a former city council or city manager came to us and said, hey, you know, we'd like to take a look at this, we think it was overlooked. Being that it was a community benefit fund, we're a part of the community, we felt like there, we had a bit of an obligation to take a look at this and reconsider it. The current escalator on, say, rent on the bigger compensation package or economic package that, that we all agree to is a 5% escalator every five years. So we feel like seven and a half percent escalator for the community benefit fund is actually more than what's in the current lease. And just again, it shows our partnership with the city of El Segundo and we just asked that you approve that seven and a half percent and we move on and continue enjoying the greatness of the new lakes at El Segundo and Topgolf, El Segundo. We appreciate you considering the item tonight.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Rochelli? No? All right. Would someone like to make a motion to approve?
Nichols, moved.
Jeru, second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
5-0. Thank you for being on.
Thank you.
Tanner, appreciate your time.
Yeah, thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Have a good evening.
You as well. Okay, next up, we have the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee report. Hi Natalie, I thought someone would introduce you. I'm introducing Natalie Strong here, ladies and gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you for moving us up on the agenda. We really appreciate it. As Mayor Boyle said, my name is Natalie Strong. I am the sitting chair of the Arts and Cultural Advisory Committee. I would like to present you with some updates, during which I will almost certainly stumble over the words Arts and Cultural Advisory Committee. For some reason, I chose the hardest one to say, to join. Okay, so. You ready? Okay. First slide, please. All right.
Sam, you're the newest member, aren't you, of the Arts and Culture Committee? Thanks for stepping up so quickly. Thank you.
I'm going to talk about him in a little bit. Okay, so first, we'd like to review budget year 2021, 2022. As part of the percent for the arts ordinance, developers may opt to install their own public art on site. For the budget year 21, 22, three developers opted to do so. The combined valuation of these three art installations, as determined by a qualified independent art consulting firm, totals $338,000 and includes from left to right, John Krajecik's Petite Grace at Nash and Grant, Josh Everhorn's Spruce Goose at the Connecta Federal Credit Union, and Nicole Landau's Wing and Cocoon at L'Oréal's North Douglas Street location. We are proud to welcome these artists and works of art to El Segundo and to add them to the growing list of cultural development program accomplishments. All right, the Cultural Development Fund celebrated several successful initiatives in the budget year 2021, 2022, as approved by city council in June of 2021. In December of 2021, El Segundo enjoyed its first Festival of Holidays. With an approved budget of $60,000 and a final cost of $25,000 to $80,000, the event celebrated the winter holidays of Christmas, Hanukkah, Kwanzaa, Diwali, Noche Buena, and Omisoka with food, crafts, and performances from each represented culture. The remaining $34,720 remains in the Cultural Development Fund for future use. El Segundo welcomed its inaugural poet laureate, Hope Anita Smith, whom you met here in council chambers recently. She will occupy the position for a two-year term with a $4,000 annual stipend. The Outdoor Dining Enhancement Program, originally budgeted for $55,000, came in at $4,800. Owing to the unpredictable nature of the pandemic, some of the original plans for the initiative became impractical or unnecessary. Despite the challenges presented by that unpredictability, the Outdoor Dining Enhancement Initiative successfully produced Art and Dine, a widely enjoyed program that brought a total of eight artists and poets to create art and poetry live during Friday night dining on the 200 block of Richmond Street in October of 2021. The remaining $50,200 remains in the Cultural Development Fund for future use. The El Segundo Art Walk made its return in August 2021 after a year off for COVID. The Cultural Development Fund provided $20,000 in funding to the one-day event that boasted 5,000 attendees and brought us the beautiful new Fox mural by Bunny Reese. And finally, $50,000 was budgeted for a TEDx El Segundo event. As we began the process of planning this event, we discovered that there are a number of TEDx brand requirements that create an unrealistically high barrier for entry. The budgeted funds remain in the CDF and we are hoping to take this initiative in a new direction in the coming year. Next slide. And now to the present. As it currently stands, the CDF has a balance of $310,000 in unallocated funds. Our recommendations for budget year 2022, 2023 total $321,000 and we anticipate a balance of $800,000 at the close of budget year 22, 23. City staff has recommended that we maintain a 20% fund balance reserve, in this case, $160,000. All right. For 22, 23, we would like to renew the following initiatives from last year. The poet laureate program, the Festival of Holidays, and the Cultural Arts Coordinator. The city welcomes Sam Lee to the newly created position of Cultural Arts Director. Sam and senior librarian Julie Todd were instrumental in accomplishing the 2021, 22 initiatives. And we propose funding the position of Cultural Arts Coordinator again this year. In addition to initiatives continued from last year, we propose the following new initiatives, the details of which I will provide on following slides. A Visual Artists in Community Program, establishment of an Arts and Culture Community Engagement Fund, Funding and Operations Account, Second City Talks, and El Segundo Art Walk 2022. Though this is a continuing initiative, there are some proposed expansions to the event that are new. All right. First, the poet laureate program. The poet laureate acts as a visible advocate for poetry, language, and the arts while actively inspiring and promoting civic pride. In her position as poet laureate, Hope Anita Smith has been getting to know our community and community residents. She is tasked with reading original poems aloud at citywide public events and as, as well as leading writing workshops for the community. She is working with city staff and the ACC to prepare media communications, encouraging interest and excitement about poetry, literacy, literary workshops, oh, sorry, write, wait a minute, literary events and related subjects. She will celebrate our city with at least one commemorative poem about El Segundo and will partner with the Library and History Committee to tell our story. For 20, 22, 2023, we estimate a cost of $8,000 to continue the poet laureate program. This includes the second year stipend of $4,000 and $4,000 for related programming costs and publicity. The program runs on a two-year tenure with 2022, 23 being Hope's second year. Potential partners include the Arts and Cultural Advisory Committee, DEI Committee, Community Services, City Management and other city departments, El Segundo Chamber of Commerce, ESUSD, ASMOA, and local restaurants and businesses. All right, the Festival of Holidays 2022 is to be once again a one-day community event, activating El Segundo's City Hall Plaza, celebrating winter cultural holidays through food, music, crafts, performances, and hands-on workshops. Festival 2022 would once again include at least Christmas, Hanukkah, Kwanzaa, Diwali, Noche Buena, and Omisoka, providing an accessible experience of diverse cultures and fostering diversity, equity, and inclusion. It would once again be presented on the City Hall Plaza, ideally expanding this year onto Main Street. It would include food booths, craft booths, a stage, lighting, and themed signage. Also included would be five to eight vendors offering food and drinks representative of the highlighted cultures. There were also the There will also this year be a beer and wine garden for guests 21 and older to enjoy. We would like to keep the stage on the elevated entry landing of the Police Department and plan to include both professional and local amateur performance groups. The estimated budget for the December 2022 event is $40,000. Potential partners include the Arts and Cultural Advisory Committee, DEI Committee, Community Services, City Management and other city departments, El Segundo Chamber of Commerce, City Service Groups, ASMOA, and local food, beverage, and craft vendors. All right. The Cultural Arts Coordinator position. The proposed budget for the extension of the Cultural Arts Coordinator position into the 22, 23 budget year is $105,000, which represents 75% of the funding for the full-time position. The cultural, Cultural Arts Coordinator is responsible for the following: overseeing the Cultural Development Fund, facilitating the percent for arts program with developers, both art onsite and in lieu options, drafting and issuing RFPs and RFQs for various artistic and cultural services, establishing a collection management policy for the city visual art collection, developing arts and cultural programming for all ages to enjoy, applying for grants as appropriate, and engaging the community through arts and cultural experiences. And now, the new initiatives. The Visual Artists in Community Initiative establishes a visual arts program that would operate very similarly to the poet laureate program in terms of community engagement, enrichment, and education. For the Visual Arts in Community Program, we would be looking for four artists per year, one per quarter, to both engage with the community and create art. The desired outcome would be production of both public art, murals, sculptures, et cetera, and hard art, paintings, drawings, photography, et cetera, with each selected artist donating one piece to the city at the end of their term, resulting in four acquisitions per year. This program would beautify the city's environment, enrich the community with art workshops and activities, and expand the city's permanent art collection. It would also help establish El Segundo as a cultural placemaking destination that encourages tourism and increases revenue for local businesses. The estimated cost of this program is $35,200, which breaks down as follows. A $600 honorarium to each of 12 finalists to develop their proposals for a total of $7,200. A $6,000 stipend to each of the four chosen artists, plus $1,000 each for supplies, for a total of $28,000. This program would run from July 2022 to June of 2023. Potential partners include the Arts and Cultural Advisory Committee, DEI Committee, Community Services, and City Management and other city departments. The Arts and Culture Community Engagement Fund is a fund with which to implement short-term and short-notice art and cultural experiences to engage the community. Projects to be paid for by this fund will be vetted by city staff and approved by the Community Services Director and City Manager. Examples of the types of programs to expect from this fund are music performances, cultural performing arts, theater arts, visiting speaker events. For example, the Holocaust Survivor Talk with Dr. Valerie Laney that we hosted recently, and any unforeseen short-term arts and cultural initiatives that may arise. Programs paid for by the Arts and Culture Community Engagement Fund would engage and enrich the lives of community members of all ages, activate city-owned spaces like City Hall Plaza, Library Park, et cetera, as well as local businesses and eateries. It would allow the city to seize cultural and artistic opportunities that arise on short notice, helping El Segundo to stay current and relevant. The Arts and Culture Community Engagement Fund has an estimated budget of $35,000 for the term of July 2022 to June of 2023. Potential partners include the Arts and Cultural Advisory Committee, DEI Committee, Community Services, City Management, and other city departments. All right. We would like to fund an operating account for 2022, 2023 as recommended by the city CFO. The estimated cost is $10,000 to be transferred into the already existing operations sub-account within the Cultural Development Fund. For the, it would run for term July 2022, 2023. This fund would pay for marketing and promotion, as well as physical supplies relating to the approved art and cultural programs. For example, printing expenses, purchased advertising, art supplies, framing and matting, exhibition preparation supplies, paints, et cetera. It would also cover the cost of collection management for the city art collection, costs such as documentation, record-keeping, maintenance, conservation, and restoration. Benefits to the city include improved implementation of approved art and culture programs with appropriate supplies, advertisement for and promotion of art and cultural events, establishment of city collection management policies and practices, and development of a digital archive for the city art collection and cultural programs. All right. Second City Talks. This is the rework of the TEDx initiative from last year. So this would be a one-day, city-branded TEDx-like event showcasing the innovation and creativity of our community while bringing people together. It would include eight to 10 speakers representing scientists, entrepreneurs, and other visionaries living and/or working in El Segundo. Speakers will be selected by a jury of members of the ACC, EDAC, and DEI committees. Second City Talks would be held at the El Segundo High School Performing Arts Center or possibly on the campus of one of our local businesses. The benefits to El Segundo are highlighting innovative and creative stakeholders within our community, promoting El Segundo as the home of multiple Fortune 500 companies and major sports franchises, developing partnerships with neighboring organizations, and attracting companies to El Segundo as a safe, innovative, and prepared community, a hub where big ideas take off. The estimated cost of Second City Talks is $35,000 for a time period July 2022 to June 2023, with the event date to fall potentially in spring of 2023. Potential partners include the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee, DEI Committee, Community Services, City Management, and other city departments. And finally, Art Walk 2022. Following the success of the one-day event held in August of 2021, El Segundo Art Walk is looking to expand it to a one-and-a-half-day event for 2022. The estimated operating budget to produce and implement programming for the extended event this year is $38,000. The event includes a Friday night kickoff event in partnership with ASMOA and featuring a live concert. The Saturday event hours are to be determined, either three to nine or possibly 12 to nine, depending on the businesses, and will include the added music venue on the 200 block of Eucalyptus that was added last year. In addition to the event itself, El Segundo Art Walk is requesting $20,000 for a new mural to be completed during the event, as well as a temporary augmented reality art installation in the city, potentially in City Hall Plaza. The proposed location for the new mural is the 109-foot wall on the engineering firm across from Eagle Dry Cleaners, just off Main Street in the alley that cuts through to the 99-cent store. El Segundo Art Walk plans to partner with Now Art to issue RFPs for both projects. A member of the ACC and the Cultural Arts Coordinator will be involved in the review of the proposals. The total estimated budget for both the event and the art pieces is $58,000. And that's it. Thank you for your time and consideration.
All right, thank you, Ms. Strong. So, we have a couple items before us to receive and file, and then also directing staff to embrace these recommendations. So if you want to have a discussion about those, we can do so. First off, do we have consensus to receive and file?
Great.
Okay.
Yes.
Let's talk about the recommendations that were presented. Anyone have a thought?
Yeah, thank you very much. I mean, I think it's just wonderful that we're using money and, you know, one of the components of developing the, the fund was to really bring art to El Segundo. I did have a couple questions, though. In regards to the, the holiday, the festival holiday, one of the things that came, it came out last, this last fall was that we had the, the Hanukkah lighting or the menorah lighting one day, then we had the tree lighting the second day, and then we had the, this Festival of Holidays the third day. And there wasn't, there wasn't a lot of synergy between the three. And when I spoke to each of the representative, the, the, each of the people that kind of put them together, they all thought that we could do it all together and be more collaborative and come up with a better, like a bigger program. So I would challenge the, the group to really talk through, you know, tea to the, each of the parties and see if we can come up something collaborative together, so it's a bigger and better for our city than it's, so it's not so disjointed.
Certainly. I know that's something that we considered last year, and for various reasons, it wasn't feasible at the time. I believe that that would be an ideal situation to try to marry them all. And we certainly would consider trying to do that.
Right. And I know that this year, the, the Hanukkah's later, so it might be a little bit challenging. But I did talk to the rabbi at the time, this last year, and they really wanted to be part of the collaborative effort.
Sure.
So I just would start early and let's make that a bigger, and I think with even, even embracing some of the clubs, there's a lot of clubs in town, the Whims Club, the Quanis, the Rotary, I think we really need to bring everybody together and make it the best, you know, almost like a holiday boutique kind of, yes. So that's one thing I had. And then the other thing was, you know, I, with the money and the ideas that you've put forward, there's two things that I really wanted to challenge the committee to look at is, you know, we're looking at the remodeling of the plunge, and a component of that is bringing back the Art Deco flavor of the plunge, and that's going to be quite costly, and especially from the art perspective. And I would really, I, we, I know I talked to Melissa McCollum about this, about setting money aside.
Yes.
And putting it aside so that when we are ready for the, the facelift of the plunge and bring it back to the Art Deco glamour, you should be, that we have the funds for it.
Yes.
And then the second thing is the entryways to our city. I know we'd really want to talk about an art installation in each of our entryways, but that's going to be quite expensive. So I think, I'm going to say to the team, if we could start setting money aside for these bigger projects, rather than just spending on little projects, I think that might be a great way for us to then, at least when we're ready to do it, we actually have the funds to do it.
At, as it's currently stands, we are anticipating having an $800,000 balance in our account by the end of fiscal year 2022, 2023. We are definitely aware of the plunge project, and it is part of our, part of our plans as it becomes, as, as it is ready for us to participate when we get to that point, as well as the, the gateways, those are also definitely on our radar. They are brought up regularly. And we hope to be ready for those when they come as well. We should have a big balance by the end of this fiscal year, and certainly some of that we will have an eye on towards projects like those as they come up.
Perfect. Thank you.
Well, while we're on that, that, there's a, we're carrying over a capital improvement allocation of $500,000 for the main and Imperial gateway. And if I recall, $400,000 was likely to be earmarked from the arts fund. Was that money already allocated and is sitting in a sub-account?
It's, it's out of our account.
So it's already out of the account? Okay, I just wanted to make sure that wasn't, that wasn't a, an oversight. Thank you.
No. Yeah, that money is already where it needs to be. So it is not included in the $800,000.
Can I, can I follow up with one more then, while, while I'm seizing the microphone because of the Diet Coke? The Art Walk, our, our last allocation for that, when that came out from, before that was allocated to the Arts and Culture Fund, when that came out of our Economic Development Fund, we had three days at about $46,000, as opposed to a, a day and a half coming in at $38,000. Is that, has it really brought a program on that one day, or, I mean, it just seems like, I'm, I'm not accusing you of, of placing. It just seems to be a massive expansion or, or it may be a massive cost.
John McCullough is here from Art Walk, and he'd be happy to answer that question.
Thank you. Good question. I think the main difference is that you go in from three events, you know, they were, they were much smaller events. I think the, the attendance and the amount of people that came last year, we just really want to be prepared staff-wise, or organizationally-wise, too. I think in years past, we've kind of flown by the seat of our pants, and, and we really want to be prepared. And part of that preparation is having, having the right, you know, staffing, security, and then, and also planning for the additional budget. So in years past, we, we, we haven't had a staged production. And I think it closes down the street, you know, you know, adding, you know, that, that additional music stage on Eucalyptus, it creates a large portion of that budget. But part of that $38,000 has been broken down on a line by, you know, a, a full budget, which, which I'd be happy to share with the council as well.
I don't think we have, we have, we have the, the, in the staff report, we have the schematic. We do not have the budget.
Yeah. I mean, I could give you some of the, I mean, I don't have to give you all.
Not, not to worry. Honestly, that, that's in their charter, right, to, to review that and make a recommendation. So if you let us line it, it will be, we'll be counting, you know, sawhorses and police, and we don't want to do that. But we do have a compelling interest that if we're paying fully burdened rates and you think that there is an exemption of some sort that applies, you are not a nonprofit, however, so I think that you'll be Xed out of that. But those are things that, that's within the purview of this committee. So we don't need to line by it, but, but that's in their, their job to vet.
But I'd also like to mention, if we do get, you know, exemptions, you know, for the stage, you know, for the allocations, that would not be spent in our budget. I mean, that would go back. You know, we'd be happy not to accept those funds.
Very well.
Yep.
I got you. Thanks. Natalie, great presentation. Shocker, the Arts and Culture Committee is creative on, on how they spend money. But I also think the really key thing is here, is that you're very good fiduciaries of your funds. To be able to have $800,000 left over after doing all these things is remarkable. I appreciate you, you're going through the process and being thoughtful on it and thinking long-term. So you're being proactive on this, and I really appreciate it. The, the one, only thing that I want to point out, and I've pointed this out to you before, this is my committee, so I've been on a few meetings. You mentioned partnerships a lot, and you mentioned potential partnerships with different committees. I'm going to caution this only by saying, these other committees have jobs to do. And I don't want, your job is fun, all right? You're creating great events. Everybody wants to be part of it. Everybody wants to take ownership of it. These are your events.
Sure.
If they would like to help you, that's fine, but it is the ACC's event.
We're not looking to offload our responsibilities.
I didn't think you were. I think people are going to want to jump on and take over some of the responsibilities. That's fun.
We, we will be respectful of their time and their responsibilities and make sure that they are potential partners.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Yes.
All right. I love the part of the report, actually, that showcased the art that was actually installed by the businesses, which is fantastic, you know, and this, this dates back to the actual 1% for the arts. You know, and, and what it is bringing to our community. And, I mean, the fact that there was always a demand, there was a desire to do these things, but there was no funding source. We created a funding source, right? We had council support on it. We created a funding source. We have your committee who is continually coming up with great ideas to enrich our community in this. And, and I recall Barbara Voss, you brought to us, it was a creative economy report that was put together for Culver City, I believe.
Yes.
Right? And, you know, a lot of times we get these reports, and I, I'm the cynic, so I always laugh and think, yeah, they just put a bunch of words on a page. Doesn't really mean anything, you know, they're just, you know, they can't really back up this data. But we bought in, hook, line, and sinker, and went for it, and, and the proof is in the pudding. It's here. It's happening. I luckily get to stare at the Fox every single day from my office. It's fantastic. I believe that that wasn't even budgeted last year in the allocation. I think that came out of the Art Walk funds. So thank you, El Segundo Art Walk. A great community partner.
That mural is a bit of a miracle.
Right? Yeah, the whole thing. And to think that we get to do it again this year in another wonderful location, which will actually be visible from the hub, right, if I'm thinking like the, the angle.
And it's quite visible as you're walking or driving by on Main as well. More visible than the location of the Fox. So it'll be even, even more better.
I just, I just love art popping up all over town. It's fantastic, and I just want to commend you and your committee. And I just hope that you continue the, the hard work and to Councilor Cheru's point, like, own it. It's yours. Don't let anybody else take credit.
Oh, no, it's ours.
Thank you so much.
We know that. Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Is there any discussion about the recommendations themselves? Or is there consensus to move forward with the recommendations as they were presented by this group? Someone like to move approval?
Nickel, so moved.
Drew's second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. We're very excited.
Okay, we're going to take a recess. I know everyone's here for cannabis and other things, the initiative that is. It's 8:08. We'll be back at 8:23, 15 minutes. We're on with staff presentations, item 18. Conversion of the Finance Manager Classification From Civil Service to At-Will Status. Adoption of Revised Classification, Specification and Examination Plan and Modification of Salary Range. And I see Rebecca Rudd, our Director of HR.
Thank you, Mayor, Members of the City Council. I have a personnel item for your consideration this evening regarding the Finance Manager position. The Finance Manager position recently became vacant in March. And when that became vacant, we conducted a review of the position, including the civil service status, the job description or the class specification. And we also conducted a salary survey of comparable positions in our survey cities. So prior to opening the recruitment for a successor Finance Manager, we're proposing conversion of this position to at-will from civil service status. This would align with other manager level positions in the city and an update to the job description to include basic boilerplate language that's necessary. And then also a salary range adjustment at the top of the salary range to bring it to the median of our comparable salary survey studies. So with that, I'm available for any questions you might have.
Any questions? Okay, we have two actions before us. One is to approve conversion and adopt the revised classification. Would someone like to move approval of that?
Drew, so moved.
Thank you.
Persek second.
Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
None opposed? The other one is, City Attorney, if you could read the resolution. Mark? Call in Mr. Hensley. Thank you, sir. Okay.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of El Segundo, California, modifying the basic monthly salary range for a full-time job classification is ready for adoption.
Thank you, sir. All right. Would like someone to, would someone like to move approval of this resolution?
Persek to move.
Okay, thank you. Give a second.
Drew's second.
Excellent. Thanks. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Five zero. Great. Moving on. We have the 2021, 2022 mid-year citywide budget report and recommended, recommended adjustments. Who will present on this? City Manager?
Our Finance Director, Joe Leal, please.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Boyle, City Council Members. Okay, so for our mid-year budget review, we are going to be taking a look at a high level, all the funds, but then coming down and focusing on the general fund in a little bit more detail. So this snapshot here, it's in your packet. This is all the city's funds. So total budget of $160 million was approved in the fiscal year 2021, 2022 budget. This is appropriations. That is being revised down to $147 million. And basically, most of these are CIP projects that are being, that were approved to be funded in the current year budget, but have, will not be started until next year or even further out. So we will be carrying those dollars over and an estimated, just under $13 million in projects will be moving forward to future year budgets.
Joe, I don't, I don't want to cut you out, but I think that's an important detail for people to understand. Much like when we spoke about the allocation coming from the Arts and Culture Committee for the gateway, this money is spent and allocated. It is not, it's just not out of our accounts yet because the project has not begun. We didn't magically save $13 million.
That is correct. And so usually what, the way capital projects work, you know, council will fund it for, for the beginning of a budget year. However, it doesn't start day one of the fiscal year. There's a whole process, design phase, bid and so on. So a lot of times those projects can take two to three years to actually occur. But, you know, yes, those funds are earmarked, dedicated to those specific projects that council approved in the adopted budget. And I do want to point out, so the general fund, which is line item number one up there, that is for council's general purposes and use. Line items two through nineteen, those are all restricted funds. So they have a very set purpose that is regulated by either law. And a lot of them are grant-funded, so they have to be used for the intended purpose of the grant. So they can't be used at council's discretion. That's only the general fund, which is line item one. And then kind of focusing back on the general fund for the current year, we did start the budget process this year last time with this $9 million gap. And this is how we came up with the plan to, to close that $9 million gap in the general fund, which council approved. I just want to highlight them real quick. So a one-time use of pulling out dollars from the OPEB trust fund, that's for retiree health, of $2.4 million. And I did tell council, I know council was very concerned about utilizing that specific tool to help balance the budget. And I said I would come back at mid-year. I wouldn't pull those funds out until we can report mid-year. I'm happy to say that we do not have to pull those funds. So that will stay in the OPEB trust fund. And there's currently about a balance of $33 million in there. Represents just under 60% funded. We are no longer contributing new contributions into the fund. That stopped last year. Saves about a little over $560,000 a year. Through investment income, we're expected to reach 100% funded by 2031. And then we can pull those dollars out and start paying the retiree healthcare, which we are using general fund dollars right now. So that will save, starting in 2031, quite a bit of money for the city, about $3 million a year. And then the other line items, one-time use of general fund balance reserves, the 23 and a half frozen positions. Some were frozen part, part of the year, some were frozen the whole year. Operations and maintenance reductions, and the reduction to equipment replacement funds. Those are all still in play and have helped to balance this year's budget.
Joe, to just interject again, that, that reduction in the equipment replacement fund, and that was $900,000 that we had allocated to the purchase of a fire truck. That, that purchase was funded by Chevron as part of their settlement with the City of Richmond. So that's where the $900,000 is money we'd earmarked any way we could allocate for this purpose instead of the fire engine.
Yeah, that wasn't the, the whole amount, but yes, that was a good chunk of it. Yes, sir. And please, any questions, please stop me along the way. Okay, so this slide focuses on the general fund revenues. So real high level, we anticipated $74.8 million in revenues. We are now expecting $75.3 million in revenues. So $530,000 higher than what we anticipated. Now, I'll just kind of touch on the big ones. You know, what I did do on this slide, which is different than what's in your agenda packet, is I did pull line item number eight, transfers in, and I removed that, put that at the bottom. And so we have lines one through fifteen, less line transfers in, really reflective of what, what our true revenues are here. Because that transfers in, part of that was a $2.4 million from the OPEB trust fund. So in, in total, our revenues, less the transfers in, are up actually about $2.5 million. The big one there is TOT tax, also known as a hotel tax. Conservatively, we budgeted $8.4 million. Looks like we're going to come in about $10.5 million. While that is great news, that is still a far cry from where we were pre-COVID. We were about $15 million pre-COVID. We're averaging $1.25 million per month. And right now, we're about just under $850,000 a month. So again, while that is good news, it's improving. We are still far short from where we were pre-COVID.
I have one question on that. There was one hotel that we were not getting the money from. Has that all been resolved?
Yes, that, that has been resolved through Mr. Hensley's office. However, that hotel did shut down this year due to construction, and I believe they may have just came back online. So they, they were down for most of the current fiscal year. Some of the other big line items, sales tax up $215,000. That's primarily due to higher gas prices. So the 1% sales tax is on the purchase of gasoline at the pump. So that's the $215. The Chevron Tax Resolution Agreement, $722,000. That is, there's a CPI applied to that each year, and it's a December CPI. That was almost 6%, so that's why there was such a large increase there. The utility users tax, which is only on businesses, not on residents, increase of about $500,000 over what we anticipated. And that's really due to the natural gas UUT. Commodity prices for natural gas have significantly increased, which drives the UUT up. Some of the line items I'll touch that are having a negative impact are the business license tax, line item number two, down $370,000. That's primarily due to some, there was at least one large business that closed shop in town, and there were some other businesses that had some reduction in headcount. However, you know, that is a reduction compared to what we budgeted. With the operation of Topgolf coming online, we have Chargers that will be coming online soon. There's some where other businesses are expanding. I'm anticipating for next year, that's going to be back up to almost the pre-COVID levels. We're even higher.
But Joe, that's, there's some externalities there that are artificially inflating. If, if our sales tax is a function of abnormally high commodity prices on gas and on natural gas, I mean, those are not solid fundamentals. Those are, those are transitory inflationary gains. I think that's pretty concerning that when we lose a big box store, we lose a huge hit on our BLT and our sales tax. And those property tax, that, that number is down because we are not having new commercial property come in?
No, so the, the property tax is down due to, there were some corporate landowners that filed for what's called a Proposition Eight.
Oh, yeah, the 2017 issues, yeah.
Right, so they had their value of their properties, assessment value lowered, and that was the result to the property tax, about $600,000 hit. That will, you know, moving forward, that will bounce back up.
I know we're about two weeks away from our budgeting session for next year. What do you think, like BLT, you anticipated being up on a whole, but what are you expecting in terms of office vacancy? Have we factored that in yet? I know it looked good this year, but I certainly have friends that are considering their leases and whether or not they're going to renew going forward with the same footprint that is.
Right, so, you know, like the big box store that Mayor Protim referenced, it depends what's going to be replacing that. So yes, businesses might be leaving or shrinking, but then there's also other businesses are actually coming into town, new businesses, and we have some expanding as well.
Yeah, no, I'm referring to, are we expecting, though, the rate of occupancy to be roughly the same going forward? I'm talking about Class A commercial office, which is our item butter in the BLT.
For, for El Segundo, we, we don't have any solid data that says there is going to be a dramatic shift downward right now. So it looks like it's going to be status quo.
And we will know, when will we have the first indicator? About February? Next February? BLT's due in December, right? December, January?
It is, but I believe Barbara Voss's office gets some type of report. I don't know if it's done on a quarterly basis or biannual basis that we can look at as far as what, what the office space is and what the vacancy rate is.
Yeah, because that's the only revenue stream on here that makes me considerably nervous when I think about the future is, we are particularly vulnerable there, I believe.
Yes, and we were very concerned about that in January of 2021. And that didn't happen. We had a slight positive outlook for this year, and it is only down 3.1%. And again, you know, this does not include Topgolf.
And, and we're considering BLT still, right? Isn't that, that's on our future agenda, right? We're going to look at that structure?
That is, that is. I'm working with the firm right now to take a look at that.
The good news, I'll say, is I spoke to one of the, the largest commercial landowner in town last week, and he said that he's actually doing very well with his whole portfolio. He's got mostly all low-rise. And what he said, though, is that the mid-rise, like the PCT, well, the mid-rises of El Segundo, those are the ones struggling to fill their space right now.
Yeah, we can include a report for the May third budget study session.
So one of the things, talking about the BLT that we really want to talk about is, you know, we, we charge more if you have more employees. And one of the components is, does it mean employees working in here? With this working from home, how does that change the amount of tax that they're actually paying?
It does, yes. So it captures the employees that are considered located at the headquarters, regardless if they're telecommuting or coming into the office once a month.
So that's something we definitely have to think about as we move forward and look at that BLT.
Okay, so I did touch on the property tax. Let's see if there's any other ones I really need to touch on. The transfers in, I did touch on that. That's the $2.4 million that we're no longer transferring in from the OPEB trust. And then our ARPA dollars that we received in July. Originally, the federal government had told us it was going to be about $1,560,000. Ended up being about $400,000 higher. And then that same payment, just under $2 million, will receive that in July of 2022 as well. So that, just to reiterate, those ARPA dollars were, received this current year, were used to balance the budget.
I have one question also. On TOT for Airbnb, is that a separate line item or is that built into the TOT?
It's built in, but we do get reports that separated out, that we can actually present that to council. Here's the dollar amount.
Because I'd be interesting to see on an annual basis what that represents. Because I know with hotel stays, the Airbnb actually should have gone up because people preferred to go to Airbnb rather than a hotel during the COVID time.
Okay, yeah, we'll get that information to you. Okay.
And then when you look at that, because obviously there's a cost associated to monitoring, tracking, and issuing licenses, what the net result is, like the cost associated with revenue encompassing the whole Airbnb component?
Okay, any other questions on this slide? So this is the general fund appropriations expenditure budget. So most of the departments are coming right in line with their budget. And again, this was a very tight budget. You know, we had 23 and a half vacant positions that we factored in, reduction in ONM of 15%, and really squeezing the belt, so to speak.
Joe, on fire? This does not include the million-dollar reduction that we authorized in the operating budget of the fire department, does it?
No, so, so council adopted the budget. And then after the adoption of the budget, came back at that same meeting and asked for that additional $1 million. But that was not part of what was adopted as part of the budget. And that's not in this report. So just real quick, I do want to touch on some of the asks. So we do have line three, transfers out, increase of $420,000. This is a transfer out to the solid waste fund or trash fund. So the city does subsidize that at a rate of about 25% for residents, and we did not include that in the budget as a transfer out. So that does need to be done. So that solid waste fund right now has a negative balance. It needs to be brought up to, at least a zero balance. Public Works, $332,000 ask. And there's various projects there that are listed out in, in the report. Non-departmental, $300,000 increase. And that's primarily due to an increased number of employees retiring and paying out their associated accrued leave balances, which they're entitled to. And we do have quite a few more employees retiring between now and June 30th. And so that $300,000 is necessary. Community.
Was that first tranche part of the early retirement we offered? Is that what incentive was?
No, no.
Is that just normal, normal?
That's just normal. So if I work here, for example, 30 years, I have accrual balance of X amount on my vacation. That's, has to be paid out as they leave. Community Services, the revised year-end expenditure estimate is decreasing by about 230. This is really due to vacancies and operational savings from the Aquatic Center. And then HR revised expenditure estimate is up by $216,000 due to costs associated with increase in personnel investigations, personnel claims, and recruitment costs.
Joe, before you go on.
Yes.
I know currently we're paying two city managers, right? Because we had severance package for Mr. Mitnick, and then we're currently paying Mr. George. Where would that show up on here? Did we somehow have additional money in the city manager's budget? Or is that showing up on non-departmental? Is that showing up under human resources? Like where, where is that? And then my second question is, how is it that these departments are so amazing that they're coming in directly on budget? I mean, that's like $3,098,785. I mean, how is that possible? I mean, it's like, it's spot on.
As you know, budgets are estimates, right? That's, that's all budgets are, are estimates. And we're estimating based on the trends where we are right now, and they're going to come in within 1%.
Okay.
It, it's going to be very, very tight, maybe even less than 1%.
You guys are that good?
Yes, that's really good.
Well done, okay.
And then also, just to make a note, line item 15, COVID-19 response. We're looking to get that money recaptured, that's why.
Yes, so that's, those are FEMA dollars, so everything associated with that. That's all hazard incident management team that disbanded in March. But all the costs associated with that, we are working with FEMA to recoup those costs. It could, you know, I've worked with FEMA before in other emergency responses, Northridge earthquake and some other disasters. And it could take several years to recoup 100% of those dollars. But we're working diligently on it. And then to address your question, Councilmember Nichol, for the prior city manager's payouts, a lot of that did come out of the city manager's budget, and some of it came out of that non-departmental, that were increasing by $300,000.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions before we move on? Okay, so with the adopted 21-22 budget, staff did advise city council that the projected general fund, unassigned fund balance the beginning of the year was just about $18.2 million. And this was based on unaudited financials. As we closed out the financial audit for fiscal year 2020-2021, which was completed in March of 2022, the audited financials resulted in a revised ending fund balance of $27.9 million. So obviously, that's, that's quite a big swing. And the increase is due to several factors. One is a change in the city's fiscal year measurement period. So going from a federal fiscal year, October 1st through September 30, and switching to the July 1st through June 30 fiscal year. So that did have an impact on that. Also issuing the pension obligation bonds. And what that did is, previously, there was a category called non-spendable reserves, which were restricted of just over $7 million in our financials. And now that, because of a switch in our fiscal year and because of issuing the POBs, which eliminated the UAL, where the unfunded liability with accounters, we have this one-time accounting adjustment, which is resulting in an ending fund balance of just a little over $24 million. And after we meet our 20% reserve, there's about $8.5 million of unassigned reserves, which we'll be discussing how to apply, or one, what is going to be the appropriate reserve level for '22, '23? Is it 20% or something else? And then those leftover dollars, how to apply them. And that will be discussed in the May third budget study session.
And those are one-time, that's one-time money?
That is correct.
Yeah, but that's, that's not, that's not finding $8 million. That's, that's a time lapse in the way the accounting changed factors. So I don't want people to think that the, the city was suddenly magically gifted $8 million. This is just a difference simply where your cash flow is counted.
Correct, and if you looked at the, you know, maybe explain a little bit about it. If you looked at the annual financial report, 2019-2020 report, you go to general fund, there's the unspendable or, you know, the restricted reserves, and it's at $7.1 million is clearly defined there. And now if you look at the 2021 report, that's no longer there. It was reduced down to .1 million or $100,000. And so those dollars are freed up now.
Yeah, so it's not a shift in just the calendar, it's...
That's correct, yeah. It moves from an untouchable reserve.
Yeah, so it was always there in the budget.
It's there, that's right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
And then we can elect at that time, in a couple of weeks, to look at the CPA, the CPU. CIP, sorry.
Yes, and, and so this, this is in accordance with Government Accounting Standards Board, also known as GASB, rules which govern accounting rules for government entities in US. And it was also audited by our external audit firm, CLA. Okay, other reserve balances for this fiscal year end, our economic uncertainty fund. So that did drop to about $1 million. During COVID, we pulled out almost $1 million to fund capital projects. Current year budget, we did put some of that money back, so we're back up to 1.9 million, which represents 95% funded. Council's policy is to be funded at a $2 million level. Our workers' comp fund has $7.7 million. In reserves, that represents a 60% funded balance of the total liabilities there. General liability fund has $700,000, which only represents about 20% funded of the total liabilities. So those will be addressed also in the '22, '23 budget. Trust balances, so we have our OPEB trust, which I did touch on, that's our retiree healthcare, $33 million there, just under 60% funded. And again, on track to reach 100% funded by 2031. Our pension trust, which we set up several years ago, prior to issuing the pension obligation bonds, we have $5.1 million in there. And that can be used, for instance, if Calpers has a really bad year and there's a new unfunded liability now with Calpers, we can utilize this as a tool to help address that. Our Par's Retirement Enhancement Plan, which is an old legacy plan for the supervisor and professional group, we have 1.4 million sitting in there, represents 60% funded level. Here's a 10-year snapshot. So the far left bar represents this year, June 30, 2022. You can see expenditures are just over revenue, so we are dipping into reserves. For fiscal year '22, '23, we're still developing that, but it's coming, it's looking like it will be about $82 million, both on the revenue and expenditures. Now, that doesn't include capital. So the $8.5 million that I showed you in the previous slide, that can be allocated towards capital or whatever council chooses. But going out, the out years, you can see the expenditures do outpace the revenues slightly. And over time, we're eroding our reserve level. So that does need to be addressed sometime in the future. And I wanted to put this in here because I think it's important because this slide used to look a lot different. It used to be doom and gloom. And the pension obligation bonds, which city council authorized last year, and they were issued in early June of 2021. We received a double A-plus rating, which is excellent, especially in COVID and never having a bond rating before. And we issued the bonds in an amount of $144 million to pay off 95% of our unfunded liability with Calpers. The bonds were oversubscribed by four and a half times. That means there's four and a half times more demand than there were actually bonds offered on the market. Interest rate, because of that high demand, our interest rate fixed at 2.568%. And again, that's the second lowest rate on any POB issued in the state in the last several years. And now the interest rates are going up. I think that will always hold that record, something to be very proud of. This saved the city over $82 million over 19 years, or just roughly, if you straightlined it, about $4.3 million per year. So if we go back to this slide, our expenditures would be $4.3 million higher each year, which obviously was not sustainable. Special revenue funds, I'll just touch on this real quick, about $13.8 million there. 5.9 allocated for capital. And these funds are restricted for specific purposes governed by the specific laws and regulations. For example, the gas tax can only be spent on street-related expenditures. Prop A and Prop C funds can only be used on transportation projects. And federal, state, county grants can only be spent on the specific grant purposes it was awarded for. General Fund Capital Improvement Project Program, so we did have $5 million this year. Most of that was rollover dollars, $4.8 million of rollover from previous years that council approved. Only $225,000 in new dollars. That really showed that COVID was still having impact on our '21, '22 budget. Debt Service Fund, so there is the, the city's facility lease for the Douglas Street gap closure. It's funded by traffic mitigation fees, so no general fund dollars. Final payment there will be done in August of 2035. So after that, those $530,000 that we typically get through traffic mitigation fees can be used for other purposes. Enterprise Funds, so the water fund, $31 million was budgeted, $3 million in capital. And it looks like we're going to have about $1.2 million in capital that will not be completed this year. That will roll over to the following year. And as far as the revenue side, we did go through the Prop 218 process last year. Council did approve a five-year rate plan. So we do have rates. Last year, it was 0% in the water, but 3% January 1st, 2022. And a 3% increase each January 1st thereafter through 2025. And that's to cover the cost of purchasing water from West Basin Municipal Water District. And then inflationary costs associated with the city's distribution system.
Joe, you think those, those rates will be sufficient, will have sufficient money in the fund to cover the 5% increase that Metropolitan Water is going to charge to West Basin, which will get passed through to us?
Yeah, so in that rate study, that's the exact number that we had used, was 5% per year.
That was a softball, just managed to put it.
Okay, the wastewater fund. Again, $6.5 million there was budgeted, $1.4 million for capital. And we're anticipating $650,000 in capital rolling over. And again, the rates there for the 218 process, a little bit higher, obviously significantly higher than the water fund. 9% per year to 9.5% per year through January 1st, 2025. And that's because those rates had not been adjusted in many, many years and an increase that we've been receiving through hyperion costs. Golf Fund, really hasn't been a whole lot of activity this year. We do have that $5.6 million outstanding loan, which will now will be addressed through Topgolf opening through the lease agreement. I'm not going to touch on this, but Topgolf, you know, we have $1.9 million that will, plus, $1.9 million plus that will be coming in revenue from that facility. And council did come up with a revenue allocation policy, which here it is. I won't go over all these bullet points, but it's either going to be allocated towards pension liabilities, towards repaying the equipment replacement fund, or towards the city's capital improvement program. And then the $200,000 that we do get in the community benefit, that is allocated for Record Park capital projects each year. I won't touch on this. Any questions about equipment placement, please let me know. General liability, so this does record the city's insurance costs plus any general liability claims against the city. We did budget about $2.5 million for claims. We did need to increase that by $100,000. That also includes employment claims as well. Workers' comp, we're right on target with where our budget is. And again, we budgeted about $2.6 million there for claims costs. If we do need to talk about tools to balance the budget for '22, '23, here are some options that we can look at, which will be discussed on the May 3rd budget study session. Recommendations, which is in the staff report, so I won't go over those. And then the next steps. So for our current budget, our fiscal year end is June 30. We then begin, finance begins the audit, which will take place June through November. And our goal is to have the audit wrapped up by Thanksgiving and the financial report presented to council in December. '22, '23 budget, we have, we already had the strategic planning session on April 12. The budget study session, May 3rd. There is time there for a second one, budget study session, if that is necessary and council wants that. And then the adoption of the budget is scheduled for June 7th. So that concludes the presentation. Any questions that council has?
I don't want to short circuit our August or April 12, nine-hour budget meeting, so. No, let's defer until then, please. Do we have consensus to receive and file?
Yes.
All right. Okay. Do we need to vote on that, Madam Clark? I don't think so. Yeah, we do? Okay. It's just a report, I believe. You'd like? Yeah, would you mind, please? Thank you.
So it would be a motion amending fiscal year 2021, 2022 general fund revenues from, oh, I have to say the numbers, 74, what is that, $1,802,700? I don't know.
Here they are, right here.
I don't do numbers.
You want me, here you go. Receive, okay, item 2, amend fiscal year 2021, 2022 general fund revenues from 78 million to 75.2 million appropriations from 77.6 million to 78.7 million. It was listed in Exhibit A. Amend the fiscal year 2021, 2022 golf fund appropriations from $10,000 to $32,000, also in Exhibit A. Amend fiscal year 2021, 2022 general liability fund appropriations from $3,94,000 to $3,194,000, also in Exhibit A. And then amend fiscal year 2021, 2022 solid waste fund revenue from 0 to $420,000, which Joe specifically talked about, also in Exhibit A. Do we have a motion to approve all four?
Nichol's second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, 5-0. Great. Thank you. Thank you, Joe. All right, pickleball. Item 20, agreement with United Pickleball Management LLC to conduct a pickleball tournament on city facilities. And I see Arisia coming up.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protim and City Council. My name is Arisia Hester and I'm the Recreation Superintendent for the Community Services Department. The item that you have before you is with regards to the contract for the pickleball tournament scheduled for June 23 through June 26 of 2022. At the city council meeting on March 15, staff brought council a proposal, which was presented by Ken Herman, CEO of the Association of Pickleball Professionals. The city council unanimously approved the proposal. Tonight, staff is bringing back a formalized contract between the proponent and the city. The contract is in your packet, along with several attachments, which include diagrams, court resurfacing details, and a sponsorship package from APP valued at approximately $41,000. Staff respectfully requests that council approve the contract so that staff can continue to plan and prepare for this event. We have key staff and Connie Thrasher here if you should have further questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Arisia. Any questions for her while she's up? Okay. Any questions in general? Okay, do we have a motion to approve? Jeru, so move. Okay. We have a first? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Great, 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 21, request from El Segundo Kiwanis Club to host and operate a beer garden at a chili cook-off at Recreation Park.
Thank you, Your Honor. I appreciate it. John Jones, interim Community Services Director. This item before you is a request from El Segundo Kiwanis Club to host and operate a beer garden at a chili cook-off at Rec Park. The recommendation before you is consider the request from El Segundo Kiwanis Club to host this beer garden as part of their inaugural chili cook-off at Rec Park or alterly discuss and take other action as related to location of the beer garden. The event itself as a whole, the chili cook-off, is being suggested to take place at just west of the clubhouse location. And the beer garden would be located just to the north of the building itself. The, the event would go from 9:00 to 6:00. The beer garden would be open from 12:00 to 4:00. It's intended to be a fundraiser for the organization. The reason we're here tonight isn't so much for the chili cook-off because that could happen at any given time. It's really about the request to see if the council willing to waive the municipal code to allow beer or alcohol at Recreation Park. I know that the location that is in question is currently being used or will be used on that date by our youth programming. So if it was agreed to take place at Rec Park, that location isn't, it would impact youth. We'd have to cancel classes if that's, you know, so deemed to move forward. I did, I know Mr. Gribbin, I think, is here tonight too. Oh, there he is. And I did have a conversation with him about this and, and some of the general concerns I had in general about alcohol at Recreation Park because it typically happens at Library Park and/or the fire station parking lot. But he wanted to see it still come forward to Recreation Park. And I thought I'd just bring it forward and kind of share with you this is, this opportunity. However you'd like to direct me, I'm here available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Before we proceed, Mr. Hensley, Councilman Nichol and I are longtime members of Kiwanis. Does it, is it, is it nonprofit? Would we be better off not weighing in on this?
As far as a legal conflict of interest or financial conflict of interest, so long as you're not receiving any income from Kiwanis, then you do not have a conflict. If you feel like it's an optics conflict.
But I mean, so I, I mean, the Ed Foundation get a destination.
But you're, you're in, you don't receive, as I've discussed this with you before, you don't receive any percentage, you have a set salary. It's not based upon how much money you receive and you don't get any percentage bonus of anything as far as the contributions, right? So no, then that's not a conflict.
All right, I'm going to step away, let Mayor Protim take my spot. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, before you go, have, in the past, have you stepped away for like the fair on Richmond Street or other things pertaining to Kiwanis? I just, I just want to make sure because I think it's bad optics if you step away, but I'm sitting here.
No, I don't think I have, but it doesn't really matter because it could be perceived as a potential conflict. Even if it's not, we just went through ethics training. So even though it isn't legally, I'm going to step away. Thank you.
I, I think that means that I should probably step away too.
Far be it for me to cock this eyebrow higher. Or, or you could do what you think is the right thing to do, either way.
I, I conflict out on a lot of things, simply based upon my location of my office or the location of a house that I've sold. And that's based upon financial benefit. I have no financial benefit from this. So I really have no horse in the race. I'm going to stay.
Very well.
Staff are available to answer any questions you might have.
Councilmember questions? Councilmember Jeru? You don't have the gavel. I have a gavel at my heart.
He's a stuffed animal. I mean, that's just as good.
Obviously, I know that when you have this type of situation in Rec Park, it brings the question about how is it going to be staffed? Is there a cost from ESPD, that kind of thing?
Correct.
I don't have a problem with any of this. I just want to make sure it's cost neutral for the city, that's all.
Right. And, and I spoke with the police chief and he said the size of the event would not require any sort of police supervision.
Great.
So that's fine. The, there will be, should be no cost because they'll have to pay whatever the rental fees are. We just have to discuss if you choose, if that location is chosen, you will have a refund of money to cancel the youth programs.
What are the youth programs, Arisia, or John, that would be canceled during that time?
I think, I think that they're a youth. That use that space. They're, they're a youth art program and/or I think there's an exercise program too.
Okay, but other than that, we've gone, you've done your due diligence on the rest of it.
Yeah.
I'm sure that you, you've done this 100 million times before. I don't have any issue with this, so I think it's a good idea.
I just have a question. Oh, you want to?
I, I'm actually from Kiwanis and I would love to just speak with you.
Okay. I have a question. So we've never allowed alcohol at Rec Park before.
Not that I'm aware of, that's correct.
But we've allowed it at Library Park.
Correct. And that festival you referenced just recently, the, the street fair?
The Art Walk.
The Art Walk, yes.
So my question is, you know, are we setting a precedent, you know, we don't, I mean, I don't have any issue with Kiwanis, I mean, beer garden, but are we setting a precedent that now we can have alcohol consistently at Rec Park? Are we opening the door?
Yes, you are.
So that would be my only. So that would be my only, that's what's only, the only thing that that that's bothering me. Then, you know, since we already have allowed alcohol at the Rec Park, at Library Park, could they not have the cook-off at Library Park?
I I did have a conversation with Mr. Gribbin prior to the site of being developed, and he did prefer Recreation Park, but although in conversation, he did feel it could be relocated to Library Park.
I just, we just have to be careful that if we say yes to one, that means we say yes to many.
I understand.
Councilmember Nickle? A couple of questions. First question, can those programs on the day of be moved inside or relocated to another location at the park? It is a big park.
Sure.
I mean, I know that there's underutilized areas over by shuffleboard and, you know, what is it, bag toss and horseshoes that never gets used?
I'm I'm sure there could be some relocation. I just don't know, we have to go down to the participants' level and validate that they are just didn't be, they'd get get an option to refund either which way and or relocation.
Perfect. Also, to Councilmember Perstek's point, when I saw this on the agenda, I thought the same thing. And as City Attorney Mr. Hensley has told us before, there is no precedent. You don't want, this isn't like the Court of Law, where a judge has ruled on something, and now someone can come and say, well, you know, in case log, blah, 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 you ruled in this favor, and therefore there is statute.
Well, I want to say this about, I mean, there's one thing you're doing legislative determinations about land use. There are different types of determinations you make. You have a law that doesn't allow use of alcohol in public areas. You've allowed it for the concerts in the park, which is a city event. City event, right?
Other, this is not a city.
Right, I understand. And then you've allowed it for Kiwanis, for the beer garden, or the Richmond Street Fair, which is now on Main Street. And so as you allow these, then you're gonna have to have reasons for these nonprofits. I mean, I guess you see now it's nonprofits. That would be a distinction, but if you're gonna have other nonprofits come forward, you're gonna have to have reasons why you're going to deny them the same type of use.
Fair enough. And I think to that point, if this was a beer and wine festival, it'd be a different conversation, beer and wine being the the primary driver. I think if every event that you're speaking of, Art Walk has a beer and wine component, the fair has a beer and wine component, years past, the car show had a beer garden right outside here, right? And it's it's never the the showstopper, it's never the show driver, it's always a compliment. So from that standpoint, I, this is a chili cook-off. It's a chili cook-off. That's what it is, you know. I don't see it as a, hey, let's get drunk at Rec Park event. If that was the case, I think I'd be right there with you. You know, and I remember there was a beer and wine festival that was presented years ago, when Suzanne Fuentes was sitting in that seat. And she she had this monologue that she went on about, you know, that Rec Park is the jewel, the jewel in our collection of parks, you know, and and, you know, we cannot allow this. And it it didn't move forward, it didn't have the support, right? I think it did not pass to three-two loss. But I don't see that in this. I think this is a wonderful complimentary event at Rec Park, where people are already gonna be going to softball games and baseball games and birthday parties, you know. If, I think we would be remiss to think that there is not alcohol being consumed every Saturday and Sunday in Rec Park near the fire pits. I mean, we've all been to birthday parties there, and I think we've all seen red cups, we know it's happening, and we don't, so to say that, like, we do not allow alcohol in our parks, I think is a bit of a farce. But I like the location, I like the event. I don't think it's a very good fundraising event. I think Kiwanis Club's probably gonna lose money, but, you know, we'll see.
A question for Kiwanis, is there a reason this this site was chosen over any of the other ones? Is that, is it power, you know, gas hookups?
The thought was, because it's chili cook-off, that kids and parents would come here, because there's playgrounds and there's other things to do. So if it's if it's in the fire station parking lot, that's not the safest place for families and kids to be running around on a Saturday afternoon. That was the idea, is like, go to where the families want to be.
And do you anticipate the the beer garden being a significant revenue driver? Or is it just gonna be ticket sales and and people just, we we want to permit beer drinking? Just terms of the mix of this.
I mean, we're, it's the first annual, so I don't think it's gonna be a huge revenue driver all the way across the board, it's about.
Oh, no, I meant by proportion. I mean, you're gonna make most of your money on selling tickets to the chili cook-off. And and, okay, so you you don't anticipate sixty percent of the revenue of this thing coming from people buying beer?
No, I don't think it's the the main financial driver on this piece. It's just, it seems like a good place to have it. And, you know, if we were to go to even the Library Park, we'd have to, you know, we probably couldn't do it, because we have to bring in porta potties, we'd have to bring in bouncy houses, we'd have to bring in concessions, you know, it would just be cost prohibitive for a first annual, I would think.
All right, any further council comments, questions? Is there a motion? Jerus moved. Is there a second?
Nickle second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. Two-two.
Do we have a coin? What do we do?
Motion does not pass. All right, Sergeant at Arms, would you like to summon the mayor?
There's a second item on the recommendation. Mayor Protemin?
Oh, pardon me?
It said, there's a second item, alternatively alternatively discuss and take other action as related to the location.
Oh, hold the phone, hold the phone.
There were, there were two items there.
It's, it's not and, so you can consider the request from the Kiwanis Club to host and operate a beer garden as part of their cook-off at Rec Park, or alternately then discuss and take other actions. So there are really not two items, it's one.
So if they want, if, can we talk about it, approve if it's at Library Park?
Sure. That's the preview of the council. It's still, if you wanted to do that.
I mean, is is there, is there interest in Kiwanis and an alter location?
The Library Park.
Provided the library's outdoor restrooms could be made available?
Yeah, primarily, the the whole point of this is a family event. It's a family event. There was never any discussion about alcohol being a major driver, a major fundraiser. It was a family event. And some of the problems with the family events have been that there's nothing for the kids to do. So we wanted the children to be able to come with the families and enjoy the chili and enjoy the contest and enjoy the judging and enjoy everything without without having to worry about what they're gonna do in the meantime. So it wasn't about having, you know, a a large amount of alcohol sales or beer sales or wine sales. It was about what, where where would the children be happiest while this, you know, family event went on? So, yes, we would absolutely love to discuss another event if sadly the the Rec Park got turned down as it did.
I I think the only, the concern, and I don't want to put words in Councilmember Perstek's mouth, but I think one of the concerns would be, it's not so much that we anticipate turning the the El Segundo Police Force loose for vigorous enforcement of of drinking at the chili cook-off. It's the 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 notion that the city attorney sort of alluded to of if we allow alcohol for sale on that property, and we think for a perfectly benevolent event this time, if there's another event from a nonprofit that we are less well acquainted with, that we would be exposing ourselves to yes, but, and what abouts?
So I think that the 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 issue here is is likely more the beer for sale than it is so much the fact that that there might be something in a red cup that an indeterminate person could have trouble judging what's in it. Absolutely. Yeah.
So if I'm hearing this correctly, it's okay if we have a kegger at Library Park?
Yes, absolutely.
But it's not okay if we have a beer garden in Rec Park? I just want to make sure I understand what we're talking about here.
Well, yeah, we have, we we talked about that, and we approved, we approved the.
I just want to make sure I understand that it's okay for Library Park, but it's not, which has kids running around and the whole nine yards and all that stuff there. It's okay there. But not the other one. Okay. I would say, on balance, the 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 votes have indicated that that is what the City Council's judge is a qualitative and quantitative difference between the two. But over to you, Barry, look like you have something to say.
So I mean, is that enter the conversation about doing it at Library Park?
Yeah.
Look, you, you could do it at Library Park. I suspect that we would, we'd be fine with it. You likely could do it, the chili cook-off at at Rec Park without alcohol for sale. I I think those are probably the the things that are are the the two competing things here.
So can we request permission now to do it at Library Park with beer?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, that's, at Library, so to take this entire plan, just just transposing it into Library Park?
Yes.
Is that date available? Do we, okay, that's.
We talked about this previously as a backup.
They could close down the Richmond Street.
Yeah, I I checked the library, just little or no events on the library.
Okay. I'll make a motion, the same motion, just putting in Library Park.
Do I have a second?
Nickle second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
So no opposed. Motion passes for no.
Don't drink in our parks and smoke where you want.
We can work with the community service group at the library to make sure those outdoor bathrooms are open, so you don't have to get a porta body.
Sergeant at Arms, summon the mayor. I would point out that it's still illegal to smoke within two hundred and fifty feet of a playground or field. Thank goodness, I thought I was gonna get kicked out of Kiwanis. My, my dues are current. Mr. Mayor, that was the, that was the pregame warm-up for the really contentious item, so we are, we're willing to spar over chili. Just wait till the, wait till the weed gets here. There we go. Thank you, Mayor Protemin. All right, item twenty-two, resolution certifying sufficiency of the commercial cannabis voter initiative petition and City Council direction on voter initiative ordinance, ordinance, excuse me, potential city cannabis tax measure, city non-initiative regulatory ordinance, and competing city regulatory initiative. And Mr. George or Mr. Hensley, do you want to open this up, or?
Yes, Mayor, Mr. Hensley will provide the staff report. Mayor and council, this is a continuation from prior council meeting. It's actually been on a couple of public session council meetings. And the council, last time you talked about this, wanted to have the clerk's office go back to the county registrar and have them check every signature that was provided or submitted to the clerk's office. And the county has checked all the signatures, and the initiative petition contains sufficient signatures to qualify for the November twenty twenty-two election. With that said, I'm going to give a, some background and staff report that hopefully answers some of the questions or comments that were raised by the public, and also kind of reiterate the options available to the council that have been discussed previously. First, I want to point out that a tax measure, which was talked about, it's been staff's recommendation since this first came forward last summer. And this has been discussed at two or three council meetings, maybe even four or five, because there have been some discussions about tax measures. And the recommendation of staff has been and will continue to be that a tax measure be placed on the November ballot with the the cannabis cannabis measure, and it's going to be a separate standalone measure. So regardless of whether there's only the initiative measure that's on the November ballot, or the city decides to put another one on, a competing one on, the staff's recommendation is to have a tax measure. So if you follow staff staff's recommendation, regardless of what gets, if something gets passed in November on cannabis, regardless of what it is, it will be taxed. So I just want to make that clear. There is nothing in the initiative petition that has a tax in it. We're not, they're not precluding that. In fact, they've, in communities, they're generally, they're staying neutral, or they support whatever the city's put on as far as tax measures. So I just want to, because there seemed to be a lot of confusion that somehow if the initiative passed, that the city wouldn't get any revenue from it. It's a separate question and a separate issue. With that said, the initiative measure is in front of you, and you have three options this evening. One is you can adopt that as a city ordinance, which means it would then be law within thirty days. And it could only then, though, be amended by a vote of the people. So you, if you vote on it and approve it as a council, you're giving it the same force and effect as if it went to the voters and got approved. So that's one option. Second option is to put it on the ballot in November. And that would let the voters decide whether to vote yes or no on the initiative petition. Or you can continue that decision for thirty days and ask that staff study the issue further and report back to you at your meeting in May. So those are your options on the measure. So in addition to that, there's been discussion about, and it's identified on the agenda this evening, that the council can put on a competing ballot measure if you want to. And what the way that would work is if we put on a competing measure, if only one of the measures passes, then the one that passes will be the law. If they both pass, because they won't be in the same question, they will be two separate measures, I want to make that clear. So if they both pass, then the one with the most votes will be the law. So they won't square off directly against one another. And people that understand the law, or if it gets explained in the materials, they'll understand how that will work. But there will be two different measures if the city decides to put something on as far as excluding the tax measure. There would be two different cannabis measures on there. If the council wants to go down that path, then what would be helpful to staff is to know what would the council want that is different than what the initiative petition has, it contains? That is, what changes would the council want seen made in its own init, or its own ballot measure? Up on the screen, the the ballot measure or the initiative petition proposes that in Smoky Hollow West and in the CO, or Commercial Three Zone, that it would be, that the sales would be allowed on that, on those zones. But then also, there's an overlay, as you look at more or less circles up on the screen, that they have to be certain distance from certain uses, such as daycare, schools, et cetera. There's there's radius requirements. And so what you end up with is a few is, if you see the purple in the Smoky Hollow, Michael's putting the curse around there, there's just a few parcels down that area that would qualify under the initiative measure. And then up on PCH, there are several parcels in that area that would qualify for where the businesses would go. And the measure provides that up to two retail outlets could be in these areas, a third if ordered by a court pursuant to some sort of court order. Now, if, for example, the council does not like those locations, and let's say the council wanted them to be east of PCH, then that would be a change that staff could make and bring back to council to put in to its own ballot measure. Or if there's something else about the ballot measure the council wants changed. By and large, those would be policy issues from a legal perspective. The one issue in the, when I've pointed this out before, that in the ballot measure that makes, that I don't particularly care for, just because it's likely to end up in litigation, is the subjective point system. And we've talked about that previously. That's a legal issue of the city sort of picking winners and losers based upon what seems to be a pretty subjective system. Now, so that's an option. If the council wants its own measure, is then to instruct the staff, what, what would you want different, done different from what is in front of you with the initiative measure? The other option which somebody raised tonight is the city could adopt its own ordinance. The proponents of the initiative measure have offered that if the city will adopt a ballot measure, which, or adopt an ordinance, which is very similar to its ballot measure, that it would be willing to get rid of the point system, and that so long, but the the trade-off is they don't want a cap of of two. And that so long, but the, the trade-off is they don't want a cap of, of two retail, uh, businesses. Staff doesn't believe there'd be a lot more than two anyway, given the limited number of sites, but obviously can't guarantee that. So that's an option. Um, if, if the city wanted to in fact, it's sort of settle, if you will, with the, um, the proponents of the initiative petition. The other option is you could adopt your own ordinance. But the, the risk with that is if you do that and the ballot measure then passes, it will override your ordinance. So, um, that may be of limited duration if the council, if we put together an ordinance right now that isn't a ballot measure, and let's say that was ready and it got adopted in August, September, and November, if the ballot measure passed, it would wipe out the city's ordinance. So I'm happy to answer questions. I know it's a little confusing. I tried to answer questions or, you know, responded to a lot of the remarks made this evening. And we're here to proceed as council would like to proceed.
I do have a question about the location. So on the deep purple and Smoky Hollow area, you know, there was a dance school that was right there on Main and near El Segundo. So would that not be part of the mean that that bubble would change? And then when businesses change, so all of a sudden a new daycare happens to go in somewhere? How does that, does that supersede, like, so say, say an area is identified as, as ready, you can put a shop there? And all of a sudden a daycare and it goes in next door?
Yeah, it could. I mean, those, again, the, so the CO-three zone is the kind of dark red along PCH on both sides. And then the Smoky Hollow West is the, I, I call them purple, um, maybe it's lavender. I'm not a color expert, but along the, uh, west side, or the southwest kind of corner of Smoky Hollow there. So those properties are in play, but the, the areas with the circles around them could change over time depending on the sensitive businesses that are there. So if.
So, but what happens if a business comes in, like, say, say it's, it's, they can put something there because of the way the, the circles are?
Right.
And the business is established? And then a hundred feet from there, uh, daycare opens up?
Oh, it wouldn't force the business to close. It's based upon at the time the permits, uh, applied for what's, what is on the ground at that time.
So they wouldn't have to move?
No.
So we could have a situation where a pot shop could be right next to a daycare or a school or some sort of?
I mean, in that, yes, you could. Now, in that example, the daycare would know that it's moving next to the pot shop. And so that's why, you know, it's, it's what's there first. But, you know, that's the way the law just works on those type of things.
There, there's a number of cities in LA County that have cannabis tax laws on their books that do not allow commercial cannabis. There's dozens of them in, in the city, or in the, in the state of California. So I think that one thing we risk is muddying the water between the two by continually applying them together. So, so in that vein, to, to be honest, I, I would move approval to item three of this. If, to, to, to have staff prepare a commercial cannabis tax initiative, so we can discuss the rest of this without muddying the, the tax piece in there. The taxes have got to exist to offset the impact. So if one of these becomes law, you fundamentally have to be able to fund the impacts of these things.
I'll second that. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, five oh. I got you. Alright, thank you, Mayor Protem. Good point. Alright. Further discussion?
I think it's a little bit telling that tonight we had about, I think about ten people that came in. I know we've gotten a few emails as well. And I think what's actually further telling on this is that there has absolutely been zero representation from this group in this chamber. So my feeling is if they were really willing to work with us on anything, they would have done it already. So I don't believe we should be making any more decisions based on what that group wants. It's an outside group. They've done their thing. They, they made their play. So now, a, as I talked about the last meeting, this really has to do with what do we do as a proactive measure in order to handle this? And I think that's what we have to talk about here. I know, I talked a little bit earlier that I think there is some confusion in the city amongst residents about why this has even been brought up. It's, again, just to reiterate, it has nothing to do with the five of us bringing up a cannabis measure. It has been thrust upon us. We have a situation and we have an opportunity to, to deal with it. So I think that's kind of an important thing to throw out there. So I think the first thing we have to figure out is what voter initiative option are we looking at? There's three things here. So maybe that's the next thing that has to be knocked out. Right? We, we hit the tax measure, now it's on this piece, because there's three options that you listed here. One to go, put it into law right away. I have absolutely zero personally, any, any reason to, inclination to even look at that. I think if in the end, they got their signatures, we want, they want to go ahead and put it on the ballot and put it to the voters, I think that's what they do. I think number three just delays the inevitable, personally. Right? I mean, I, am I looking at that right? I mean, voter, the, the initiative three, the request report from staff, to me, that just limits the amount of time we have to do what we need to do.
Well, after you, if you want, if you were, the council wanted to do an additional thirty days, or wanted additional thirty days, at the end of that, you're gonna have to go back by law and do either A or B.
Right.
So you're, it's just a time issue.
So that's why I, I really think it's a matter of A or B. I don't know if you want, any, anybody has any other, um, discussion on that piece of it?
I, I do. I don't, does A and B include our own competing measure? Yeah, because, uh.
That's, that's a separate issue. You'll have to do A or B regardless.
Okay, I'm sorry Lance, I must have missed that. What's A or B again?
Yeah, so A or B is.
One, two, three, four, five.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, um, A, or option one is just let it go through right now, don't even put it on the ballot and, and it becomes law.
Do you adopt their initiative?
Right.
But as an ordinance, which means in the future we could amend it by a council vote. If you adopt the initiative as an ordinance, right? Now, you have to adopt it as, initiative as an ordinance initiative initiative.
Right, so if you, if you adopt that, it can only be amended by another initiative.
Even if it's an ordinance?
Yeah.
Okay. Do we have a motion for A or B then?
I would like to make a motion for B, which is to, uh,
Is to submit an initiative?
Submit it to the, ordinance to the voters.
Got it, okay. I'll move approval of that. Do we have any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Wait, just so, just so I'm totally clear. This is, so we're, we are, we're not taking any action on this. We're gonna put this on the November ballot.
Well, we can do something.
Now, we can, we could, we could put our own initiative on. We could have an ordinance that conceivably they may withdraw. But right now, we're gonna kick this thing straight to November.
Yeah, and I understand that we either adopt it now as an ordinance, or we put the ballot measure on the November election. And I'm saying we have a first and a second on putting it on the November election, which, we have to do one or the other. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Chris, were you, were you aye?
Yeah, I was an aye, thank you.
We should, as a housekeeping matter, just pass the resolution about the, the count, um, which I'll read. This is, this is just certifying the count. A resolution of the city council of the city of El Segundo confirming the city clerk's cer- certification of the sufficiency of petition signatures for the voter initiative entitled Initiative Amending the El Segundo Municipal Code to repeal the current prohibition on commercial cannabis activities and instead authorize commercial cannabis retailing in specified zones within the city, subject to a regulatory permitting process. This is just confirming that it has adequate votes, or adequate signatures. I should be careful.
Got it.
Nickel's still moved.
Jeru's second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Five zero. Alright, now we can talk about what's next. Thank you, Lance.
Am I just saying for historical purposes, because there've been some, uh, talk in the paper about what city's history has been on this? And the city of El Segundo, and I don't remember the year that the medical marijuana ordinance passed, which was prior to the commercial ordinance, or ballot measure statewide. The city has consistently always prohibited everything that wasn't preempted by state law. So, um, just want to make that clear. So you said people are asking you if this is the city's idea. The city's current law is that the only thing that's permitted cannabis-wise in the city of El Segundo is the, um, home cultivation that the state, um, has said that the cities cannot, the cities are preempted on and the cities cannot prohibit. That's the only cannabis cultivation, um, or retail, or there's, there's no retailer sales permitted at all currently. So it's only home cultivation currently permitted.
Okay. Any of my colleagues have a thought on the next order of business?
So now, now we need to talk about, do we want to put our own initiative?
Yes.
Or an ordinance?
Exactly, initiative or ordinance, right.
So you're saying if we do adopt an ordinance and it goes on the ballot, which it's, anyway, the, the, the original, um, motion, initiative, and that passes, that supersedes the ordinance?
Correct. Now, I should point out that the, the initiative measure only deals with retail sales. It doesn't deal with, um, other commercial uses such as cultivation, warehousing, manufacturing. It doesn't deal with any of that. That leaves it, it's left strictly to the city. So it doesn't legalize that. The city doesn't do anything with those topics. It only is the, the two retail outlets. That's all it deals with. So I just want to make that clear.
And Mark, we still have thirty days roughly to get together some language on a competing initiative, or no?
Yes, well, it would be good to get some direction from councils tonight, if at all possible, because we have to, if we're going to provide, if, if the city wants to do a competing initiative, we're really gonna have to have that wrapped up by the end of July. And that's not a lot of time. I mean, we're almost in May. We have to, uh, we need to get the language put together. We're gonna have to make a secret determination. So there's not a lot of time left.
I, I have some ideas I want to run by my colleagues, a couple of quick ones. One is, I like the idea, as you mentioned, Mark, of east of PCH as opposed to where we currently have it outlined. I like the idea that not fronting major thoroughfares. If you go to other cities, it's very clear you drive down Lincoln Boulevard in Venice or Santa Monica, Sepulveda north of us through Westchester, you have huge cannabis dispensaries in your face, in the face of all the children. And, um, it's just, you know, it's out there and it's very visible. So it would be no fronting major thoroughfares to be defined, no retail zoned areas. I, I think that people that want cannabis, assuming our voters vote for this, they're gonna go find it. And if it's a block away and it's not on a main street, what difference does it make if it's an industrial area, a commercial area? And that would be the final point, is it's, would be excluded to industrial slash commercial, however you define that. But I'm thinking more light industrials opposed to heavy foot track, traffic, retail where kids are coming in and out, like, God forbid it's at the point or Plaza El Segundo, for example.
Are, are you suggesting for an ordinance or for an initiative?
Initiative.
Okay, yeah, because they will not withdraw their initiative for an ordinance that does that.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, that, sorry, that would be for our own initiative, to be voted on by our voters.
Mark, can you go back and just clarify something for me? If this body was to pass the resolution and the, uh, the initiative that we just certified that's going to be on the ballot, there's an ordinance in place, it's been passed by this body, and then that ballot initiative passes. So the ballot initiative would supersede our ordinance or take precedent over our ordinance?
Correct.
Based upon the fact that it was written and, and the signatures were, were compiled?
It was approved by the voters.
Based upon the fact that it was approved by the voters, got it. And the voters understand that if it was approved by them and they don't like something about it, they can't change that until the next general election. Because we can't change anything on that.
I can't say what all voters understand about ballot measures, so probably some do and some don't.
But that is the reality.
Yeah, that is the reality.
If there's a little nuance in it that nobody likes, we have no power to change that. That would have to go back to the voters and the voters would have to change that.
That's correct.
Got it. So the reason I, I just, I simply asked that question because, you know, regardless of where I stand on this issue, if, you know, if, if the will of this group was to have staff work on language, bring something forward and pass it ourselves versus going to the, going to the voters, I think it's just really important that we understand how this game is being played and that even if we think we're winning, we could still be losing. And so I think that it's really, really important that our voters become educated. I think it's really important that all the people who are, you know, are proponents of this in our town get out and really try to put their money where their mouth is and, and, and get people voting for the right initiative. The other question I had though is, could we also, could we put up two? And what would happen? Right? Because you say they're not going against each other, right? So this isn't like initiative A, initiative B, or just no, I don't want this at all, right? So.
No, no cannabis sales.
So if there was no cannabis sales, right, initiative A, what we just approved, initiative B. And then initiative C, which is cannabis sales based upon the direction that we have ascertained via all of our resources. And let's say all three of them pass, then what happens?
The one with the most votes.
The one with the most votes. I just, I, I just, I know there's some, there's people sitting at home. We heard from people at the mic tonight. Like, there are still people that are not in agreement. I just think that us, we, if we're gonna really put this to the voters, give them an option.
Give them an option.
Right? I mean, it, but let me ask you this, Mark.
There was something on the last statewide ballot, and I don't remember what it was now, but where they were, they were competing, but, you know, there was a yes and no. It got very confused and, um, but it, yeah, that's the same, it's the same kind of situation. It becomes, it does become.
And now, what does it need to pass?
Uh, fifty percent plus one.
Fifty percent plus one. So really, a non-vote for either one is a no. Right? Yes, no? Correct me if I'm wrong.
I think that's kind of, my, my point is that the, the people who are gonna vote no, you could put five measures on that ballot and they're gonna vote no for all of them. We're, we're worried about the ones that are gonna vote yes, right? So I, I think we have a couple of options. I actually believe that it would probably be in our best interest to do it as an ordinance. However, I don't know if there's an appetite for that. I also understand there's a risk involved in that. However, if you already have it in place, then it's a lot easier to fight against the one thing, in my opinion. I, I don't believe there's an appetite for it, but I think there's, there's, it's, it's a valid argument. And again, I think we're after the ones that are gonna vote yes, which I still think is gonna be the majority of the people in town. I think you can just look at what came in here today and, and I think it's easy to see that. I actually like your, something that talks about east P, east PCH and, and the major thoroughfare thing, those are good additives. The whole poison pill in this whole thing is that third-party point system. We gotta get rid of that. So my feeling is if we're gonna add something to this to get rid of that, number one, I think I mentioned it last time, five thousand square foot minimum space. That, that, that takes away all the small players and brings in the people that have to invest in it. You're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars in investment, not someone that rents a storefront. So you have to be in it a, as a professional in order to do that. I would add the cultivation aspect. I don't even know if that's legal to do, but that would also separate, for example, the, the people that brew their own beer and the people that just buy other beers and sell them in their store. That, that's another aspect of it. And I'm gonna say unlimited licenses because, first of all, if you do five thousand square feet and cultivation, it's gonna limit anyway where you can put this thing. And that also takes away, I think, the vast majority of, of potential litigation, uh, when it comes to dealing with the licenses on it. So those are the things I would add in, in order to protect ourselves, um, in the long run.
Okay, city attorney, I've got a question for you. Because we're obviously pretty new at the, uh, initiative game, judging by the fact we keep confusing it. If all five of us have a different vision for what a successful initiative could be, are we allowed to have five different initiatives as courtesy to one another? If my initiative is no and his is no, except, you know, in a purple house and.
So long as you can get three votes for however many more you, how many.
So people could be staring at a ballot with a limitless number of cannabis-related initiatives.
I should point out that there's a cost that goes with each measure, so, and what about proximity is that cost?
Sixty thousand for one? For sixty thousand. And what do we estimate the cost of one litigation?
For sixty thousand. And what do we estimate the cost of one litigation against us for a third-party point system? Five hundred thousand dollars?
That, that depends, that depends on what happens. Now, the ballot measure that, um.
I know a deductible seven hundred thousand.
The initiative, the initiative measure provides that the business will defend and indemnify the city. So if that business has the wherewithal to defend and indemnify the city, uh, there will still be some legal fees, um, overseeing whoever, we're gonna wanna keep an eye on what's occurring. And there'll be some staff time, there'll be some, you know, opportunity costs, if you will, watching this battle going on. And it'll, you know, it becomes a political football of sorts too. So it's not, it's not cost-free, but the legal fees, in theory, assuming again the business can cover the, the cost, will be covered by the business that gets the permit.
Question, just real, just clarification actually. If we were to put in hypothetically, um, our own ordinance, could we atta- attach the tax aspect to it in the ordinance itself? It's not gonna go to the ballot, it would be something we write as an ordinance, or that has to be separate, correct?
Well, under, tax measures have to be approved by the voters.
By the voters, that's what I thought, I just wanted to make sure, and if, for whoever's still listening on this.
And it has to be a separate initiative on the ballot, like it couldn't be, couldn't be part of our initiative?
It potentially could be, I, I wouldn't recommend it cause you get into two issues. One, whether you're mixing items together on a ballot measure. But two, if yours, if the city has the fewer votes, you won't have a tax on what their measure. So that's why the recommendation is to have a separate tax measure so that, uh, regardless of what comes forward in the future also, I mean, this is just one election. If something comes forward in the future about cannabis, the, the point will be to have a tax measure in place to cover all situations or, or hopefully.
I think one of the tactics Redondo is considering was a development agreement in lieu of a tax for their ordinance in part of their task force paper. Would that require a vote of the people? That's a council directive, isn't it?
Um, that would not require a vote of the people. I'm not certain what that gains them. Um, that's an interesting, so you're gonna force a development agreement and.
I think they're ultimately looking for more control of the process and also to get away from, they, they had the same initiative come forward with the same point system.
You know, I have to think about that some, I don't know that I see a big, um, we can look at that, whether there's some, um, something to be gained by requiring a development agreement. I mean, attack and, and not have a tax, just a development agreement.
I'm saying there, there, looks like they're going that direction. Um, well.
I mean, I, I will say out of all respect, due respect to Redondo Beach, um, you know, they're, the way they, um, legislate things is, um, complicated. I, and I don't know that it's all that desirable most of the time, I mean, it's very difficult.
They've had a fair share of litigation too, I know that. Uh, okay, so do we have some consensus around a hybrid approach? Which would be a competing ballot initiative that is five thousand square feet minimum in the industrial, commercial zoned area east of PCH without fronting any major thoroughfare and no, and no retail zoned areas?
I also, I also like.
I think before you, yeah, okay, go ahead, sorry.
I also like having the no initiative on there as well and give the people a choice.
I, I, I honestly, I, Carol, I, that was a, that was a thought, but really, if you wanna vote no, you just don't vote yes. Right? And then it doesn't get, and because that, that is the reality, and that's, that answered my question. But Mr. Allen, based upon what they're saying, if you eliminate the thoroughfares, if you eliminate everything west of the Boulevard, you eliminate shopping centers and you add the square footage requirement, is there even a property that fits that within the zones that it's allowed in?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'd have to study it. I, I'm, we'd also have to identify what thoroughfares, you know, where, where.
I mean, then we gotta define a thoroughfare. What is a thoroughfare? Is Continental a thoroughfare?
Yeah, no, that's what I'm saying, that's what I said, to be defined, but I think of it like, uh, there's, there could be a traffic threshold that's easily defined. It's like PCH clearly is one in my mind, but I know there's parcels that are five thousand plus east of PCH for sure.
Yeah.
No, no, I know, but most of, most of those buildings east of PCH are like mid-rise or high-rise. Right? On Nash, across from a sports field, right? Which is one of the things that you said, I'd rather, you know, rather have it not be in the view, right? So now you have a sports field that, you know, families are going to all the time. There are small buildings across the street from that on Nash.
There's Laireport, there's, there's streets that have a low-profile industrial zone.
And I'm just thinking about, like, when you drive down those roads, the buildings that are there, cause there are some like loading dock style buildings, right? And I, I was, I was, while you said that, I just started thinking, and I was thinking that one of the things that we have heard from our commercial tenants is that there are, there are very limited space on like dock loading buildings. And those are in high demand, right? So could we potentially be shooting ourselves in the foot?
Maybe, it doesn't mean, first of all, it doesn't mean it has to be financially feasible.
No, no, I.
I mean, I think it's the highest and best use, so if Pro Lodges or Amazon wants to take that space and they're paying five million an acre right now in LA County, so be it.
I, it's the, the fear of the unintended consequence. And the only reason I say this is right, we say it sounds like a really good idea. And then the people that care about this go and start looking and start looking for what available parcels there are and they realize how limited they are on that, right? And then what, what do they do? They immediately turn and go, okay, well, the initiative the city is putting up sucks based upon A, B, and C. And then that support ends up going to the other initiative, cause the other, other initiative actually gives them the opportunity to have the retail spaces.
I totally concur, the only thing I wanna point out is, we're directing staff, he asked for some direction. They're gonna come back to us and they'll tell us there's one site over there, or they'll say there's thirty-five that we think are.
Yeah, I just, I'm just, this is open, open conversation, open dialogue, I'm just thinking out loud and, and going through the rolodex of buildings in my head that are east of the Boulevard and where it could potentially be if you eliminate thoroughfares and so on and so forth, you know?
So can we also, in part of your initiative, out in the direction, include a, a zone around the campus, campus and keep that?
Yeah, I was gonna actually ask the, the clarification, if, if there was still desire to keep the, um, in this case, it's a six hundred foot and one thousand foot buffer from, uh, it's one thousand feet from schools. I think it's six hundred feet from, uh, childcare, daycare centers, I, I could clarify. But if we still wanted to keep those same buffers.
What's, what does it count? I, yeah, I, I'm sorry, I just assumed that was gonna be part of it still. Is everyone, anyone feel differently?
I, I think we're reading a little much nuance into a general election on this. The vast majority of the people are gonna vote on a November ballot on this, are gonna be mad about gas prices or Ukraine. And they're not gonna have done a tremendous amount of diligence on the buffers. So I think the big principle here is what is gonna catch a human eye on a ballot if you really have an initiative you wanna put on there? Because this is not gonna be an April election with two thousand people deciding who sits on a dais. And there's gonna be six thousand votes in this town or seven thousand votes in this town. And most of them aren't, are gonna know which initiative they care about.
Unless we do.
One thing I clarified, the city attorney is, we can campaign, as long as we're not using staff resources or dollars. We can campaign in our position for the initiative that we support as well. So I think, if I think about, what was the measure on, um, TOT? That was a big one, measure B back in the day. Um, a lot of council members lobbied really hard for that, um, successful bill. Prop two eighteen was another one, we'd never passed a solid waste fee transfer to residents two, two, two attempts prior. We finally got that one done. So I agree that the nuance of the language is gonna be key and it can't be overly burdensome. But I think, I guess what I'm trying to establish is, do we have consensus on putting some parameters in place on our own initiative to go for the voters to compete with the one that was brought forth by this outside group?
Yes.
I, I think we definitely have consensus that we need to go to an initiative and not a resolution simply because the initiative would then trump the resolution if it passed. So a competing resol- a competing initiative has to go forward, correct? And then I would just, I would just ask staff, like, you have people that have studied this, you have people that have reached out and offered their help in regards to what other cities have done and, and, you know, fell into a trap that they didn't realize. And I say that we utilize those assets, cause they're assets, right? Why not? People are willing to help, take their help, find out what, what you think, what staff truly believes would be best fit, uh, after hearing the will of the council, which is if you could avoid thoroughfares, if you could put some restriction on the building size and the cultivation component as, uh, council members have restated. I think if you do all that and, and come back, I think that's something that you could have consensus on.
I, I think we're gonna try to come back at your very next meeting just so that we, um, for, we have some clarity about what this would look like. Cause we really don't have a lot of time.
Do we need to create a committee, like an outreach committee?
I, well, that's something, if you're going to do that, well, that meaning as far as an election issue?
Yeah.
That's something you do outside of the chambers.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm gonna move that we approve, we direct staff to pursue a, our own voter ballot initiative to compete with the voter initiative that was already provided and qualified by way of petition signatures. Do we have a second?
Uh, I, I will say before, before someone moves, that, that we are at risk of making this a value judgment on cannabis, which I don't think the people of El Segundo have asked for, as opposed to a value judgment on these individuals foisting this law against us. So I think if, if the vision is to have some sort of outside the dais campaign, uh, I think by putting our own initiative on, on this, it becomes a, a value judgment on cannabis, which is a, a dialogue that might lead us to a less bad law, but not really a law we wanted.
Thank you, Mayor Protzen. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, well, any other discussion? We'll go to the vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Proposed?
No.
Okay, four one. Good discussion, thank you. So we'll see that then, the first meeting in June with some proposed language and what the inventory looks like of available locations.
We're gonna come back with, um.
The tax too.
Well, we'll, we'll come back with what that looks like property-wise and whatnot. I don't know that we're gonna have, I don't think we're having an ordinance drafted by then. But we'll, we'll come back with the big key points and what you're, you wanna know, property-wise, what that's going to look like as we put, you know, this in place in the areas you've talked about. We'll, we'll be prepared to talk about that.
Would you talk to Manhattan Hermosa and Redondo, cause they are further along? I, I just heard from some of their council members, but I mean, it would be good to see what they're considering as well.
Yeah, I've, I've been watching and reading what they're doing now and I will follow up. One of, um, Redondo has a tremendous amount of materials out there. Uh, I know, yes, I will.
I'm just saying, especially if they're doing their own initiative, one of them is, one of them is going to an ordinance, but the one that's going to the initiative might be helpful to know what language they used. All right, we are almost done. Uh, we've got.
Just, just for clarification, we, you're also coming back with the tax initiative.
Yes, that'll be, um, where's your, next meeting, we can have some detail?
I mean, those are available off the shelf. All you have to do is change the name of the city, there's a million of them out there.
So I am working with, uh, David McPherson with HDL, he's drafted over a hundred and forty ballot measures for cities throughout California on cannabis. So he is probably the, uh, leading expert in that, in that space. Um, I've already started working with him. I should have something before council, May seventeenth?
All right, great, thank you. Moving on to committees, commissions, and boards, item twenty-four, appointments, the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee. We had, council did interviews, what was that, six weeks ago now, something like that? And we came up with three great new members of the committee. Joseph Michael Lipsy, who's been very involved in the community with scouts and many other programs. His term will expire October thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Rebecca Yussman, her term will expire October thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. And Genesis Jackson, her term will expire October of twenty twenty-three, congratulations. City clerk reports.
Not this evening.
Okay, city treasurer is not here. Councilmember Drew?
Nothing from me.
Councilmember Nichol?
Just wanted to make sure everyone was aware that this Thursday, the twenty-first, uh, the El Segundo Citizen Forum for Hyperion meets. Uh, it's a Zoom meeting. It is, uh, what is it here, six PM? Uh, it's on the city calendar, so if you go to the homepage, city homepage, scroll to the bottom, uh, click on the calendar, click on the twenty-first, it's there, all the information you need to log on is there. I know that this is, um, it's obviously been a point of discussion online and around the community, what's going on with Hyperion, upcoming work, that sort of thing. This is the meeting where they discuss what's upcoming, so on and so forth. Uh, also, if you are not receiving the Hyperion updates for like construction notifications and such, uh, I don't know how I got on that distribution list, but I got two emails on that distribution list, cause I get them twice. And, uh, the, uh, the new, um, scrubber is supposed to be coming online, which means, yes. Yeah, it's happening right now. So they took, if it smells at home right now and you're on the west side of town, understand that it's, it should be better tomorrow. At least that's what it said online, right? But it could, based upon whether other circumstances, take them longer to bring the new scrubber online. But just understand it, it, they're trying to move in a positive direction, so we are told. Um, Thursday, if you have comments and you wanna share them, uh, you know, please join us at the Citizen Forum. I will tell you there are no action items at this forum, there, uh, there's no policy that is made, there's no votes. It's really just information sharing, um, with, you know, seven to ten employees from LA Sanitation on the call. Uh, so if you would like to join us, go for it. And then, um, one other comment to, uh, Chris's point, I see your point in regards to the conversation potentially in the fall. Um, and I just, I wanna make sure, like, I think the community knows where I stand on this, I think you guys know where I stand on this. I, I, I'm, I'm just not a fan, you know, I, but at the end of the day, it's the community's choice because this is all of our town, right? It's not my town, it's not your town, it's, it's all of our town. And so if, if the voters of this community wanna move forward with a cannabis initiative, then I think they should have their choice. And I think the, the simple answer is that, I mean, for me, I'm not a big fan of it, I'd rather we not have to deal with this, but our hand was forced, so if you don't like it, don't vote for it. If you do like it and you want it, then vote for this measure, right? And just leave it at that. And, I mean, I think in a community, we should all be allowed to disagree. Like, I really don't like the Cowboys, and I know you love them. I mean, and that's fine. I really wanted to ban smoking. And you guys, and some of you didn't, and that's fine. Like, we should be allowed to respectfully disagree. And, uh, you know, there were public comments tonight, you know, a couple of members of the community saying that we should be ashamed of ourselves for the things that we're doing. And, uh, it, it amazes me how uninformed sometimes some of the members of the community are. And, and, you know, I know the agendas go out and it's clearly important to us cause we're sitting up here and we ran for election and we wanted to make, uh, you know, policy in our town. But, uh, I just, I would just ask the community to just take a little bit more time, understand where we're coming from, the things we're working on, the things we're doing to try to make this community a better place. And, uh, before going on social media and posting stuff, like, call us, text us, email us. We're happy to conversate, as councilmember Drew said earlier tonight, three to five calls or emails a day. Uh, but I just, I thank, this, I just wanna thank this board. You guys are respectful to each other, uh, even when we disagree. And so I really appreciate it. And Drew, next time Quanis comes up, don't recuse.
All right, thank you, Councilmember, Councilmember Prustock?
Yeah, so two things, um, I just wanna thank the Community Service Group for hosting the egg hunt, Easter egg hunt this weekend. It was, uh, very well attended and there's a lot of volunteers from the high school, um, to make it happen. And they just did an amazing job and there was a lot of happy faces and a lot of kids enjoyed the hunt. Um, and then I do wanna mention, you know, it seems like the homelessness at the beach, be, by Doc Wyler is growing. Um, you know, we don't really have a lot of, uh, say in that, right? So, um, I just wanna make sure that, could we, I, I'm asking you as the city manager, if we could put some extra pressure on the county, the beaches, but if we could let the public know where they should, who they should contact and communicate with, that would be great, cause, um, I think the more noise they make, the better. The squeaky wheel always gets attended.
Thank you, ma'am. Mayor Protzen, Pimentel.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, a few things, uh, transit-wise, we're having a big meeting in May that's gonna determine quite a bit of the routing on the green line. So depending on, on whether the one-seat ride proverbially, if you jump on a norwop, will you take it all the way to Redondo? Or will you take it straight into the airport? And if you wanna come south, you have to make the change at the airport and come down. Uh, for us, that makes a, a piece of convenience for people who use it to commute to downtown. Uh, that adds a pretty significant hiccup because you'd have to go into the airport and then come out to go make your connection to the silver or, uh, the blue line. So that is a, that'll be a lengthy meeting in May. We'll also likely take up some pieces of the four oh five, uh, express projects, so some of the four oh five multimodal.
So some of the four oh five multimodal things that will go from here all the way up through, uh, the San Fernando Valley, about how those get connected and what the parallel and corollary routes look like. Uh, those sound trivial. Uh, their estimated completion date is twenty thirty-eight, so hold on to your hats. But it is an enormous amount of money involved, uh, for projects, uh, that are pretty speculative. We got a lengthy briefing on routing for the Olympics. Uh, none of those venues necessarily touch us, but they do touch the South Bay. Uh, a lot of the areas around Cal State Dominguez Hills and the Torrent Sports Complex will be a big part of it, as will, uh, Inglewood. So for our hotels, that could be a significant boon. Um, and I think that when we talk about hospitality to include, uh, home shares, those are things that we all need to bear in mind, because that is a, obviously, it's the Olympics, uh, and a lot of people coming. And the idea is not to have to add a significant amount of infrastructure. And that was one of LA's big sales pitches, is that we're almost just ready to go from jump. Uh, but that will have a significant effect on us. And then lastly, uh, the mayor and I attended a meeting with the LA District Attorney, George Gaskon, um, and talked a bit about, you know, what we thought criminal justice reform and the priority of work in the district attorney's office, how that was playing out on our streets, uh, and what is, is conventionally termed quality-of-life crimes are significant crimes for us. So that is the, the, the things that, that you see with homelessness, the criminal threats in public, public ironation, uh, catalytic converter theft, property crime, organized property crime at the point. Uh, and we got a, a pretty receptive hearing on that. And I think part of it is, we showed up, the, the police chief did a wonderful job, city manager did a wonderful job having the statistics laid out, because they certainly knew our statistics well. Uh, and as, as Councilmember Nickel says, when you, when you argue about lies and damn statistics, uh, their reading of what our numbers mean and our reading of what our numbers mean is a matter of perspective. Uh, and it was a long, you know, an hour and twenty-minute discussion. Um, but I think it was time well-spent, and I think that, uh, we, we hope that that will lead to some slightly more aggressive prosecution and issues that are priorities to the city. But that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Yeah, you did a great job advocating there at that meeting, as did Chief. And one thing, I guess the tangible for me that came out of that was the ability to now have a point person to look at some of the repeat offenders and actually get prosecution, which has been a problem for us in the past. So thank you for that. Couple of quick things. One is, I'm gonna personally apologize for the pool heaters, not that I created the problem, but I think that we were about four weeks late in getting some proactive message, messaging out there to our residents. We heard it often. We even had people coming back today, even though we put some stuff out. So I think we need to, again, revisit how we communicate, where we communicate, when we communicate, and do it more robustly. Secondly, Mayor's Good Friday Breakfast was great. Thank you for Rotary, for allowing me the opportunity to say a few words and then introduce Kenneth Chancey, who's a member, Vice Chair of our Diversity, Equity, Inclusion Committee. I thought his story was great. And it was so good to have everyone back after a three-years, or three-year reprieve. Finally, uh, we're really fortunate to have Chris Pimentel serve as the Chair of the Transportation Committee for the Council of Governments. Uh, I feel fortunate to serve as the Chair of the, of the Board of Directors of the COG. And one of the things we've been working on, actually, Chris started this with Contract Cities a couple of years ago. And it's becoming a reality, which is a housing trust fund for the South Bay City Council of Governments. So it's looking pretty good that Ben Allen, Senator Ben Allen, and/or Al Marasucci will take up bills to advocate for, um, I believe it to be fifty million dollars. I just sent a call the other day with Stacy Armato of Hermosa Beach and, um, Al Marasucci's staff. And that could be used as a, almost like, think of it like a bridge loan or starter capital for development projects, that they're just trying to get over the hump in terms of making them pencil. They could use that for the affordability component. It would be a payback to the JPA that would be formed, uh, formed, Joint Powers Authority that would be formed. So it's really exciting. I wanna thank Chris for starting that a couple of years ago. It looks like it might actually come to fruition. That's all I have. City Attorney?
Nothing, Steve.
Thank you. City Manager, any, yeah?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor. And actually, uh, we have our South Bay City Managers Association meeting tomorrow, and the, and the Housing Trust Fund item is on the agenda.
Oh, real quick, unanimous, no, it wasn't unanimously. It was almost unanimously approved by the Board of Directors of every city, by the way. Even though not all the cities might participate, nor do they have to, they supported the idea with the exception of one, no vote.
Great. And then, uh, in response to Councilmember Purstik's, um, uh, follow-up on the homeless encampments on the beach, I, I just so happened to meet with Gary Jones, who's the Director of Beaches and Harbors yesterday morning. We had a lengthy discussion about that, and I've already established some dialogue with him and his staff, and connected him with our police chief, uh, to, to start looking at that on the county area there. And then, uh, as any other, as for the other follow-ups, I believe I, I, on behalf of staff, we responded earlier in the meeting tonight, and we'll, we'll make sure we follow up on all of those other items that were discussed. Uh, that's it, thank you.
Thankfully, we have no memorials. We are adjourned at, I don't think what time it is, ten, ten, ten twelve? Thank you.